Are you ready? All those that are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
I would now like to call the regular meeting of August twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-four to order. Are there any additions to the agenda? John, make sure your microphone is on.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have an addition. I move to add to the agenda the topic of amending the contract of employment for the interim president.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
So we've got two seconds. All of those, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. It will be added to the agenda. John, and I'm going to have to have Bill. I'm thinking that this would be an individual item. Is that what you're seeing also, John? Okay, so let's put it as a two point three five. We have that, okay. Are there any other additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Jeff.
I would like to add the, evidently there was a mistake when, not mistaken oversight, when the agenda was done. The hiring of a outside CPA firm to help with duties of the Treasury, Treasurer, and the Board members. I'd like to put that on the agenda for the approval.
Okay. So I'm. Bill? Since that was past business, it would be under old business. So I'm thinking that goes under unfinished business. Am I correct?
Sounds logical, yes.
Okay. So let's add that under unfinished business, under item one point nine eight. Are there any other additions to the agenda?
Don't we vote on that?
Pardon?
Andy?
To vote, I'm sorry, we have to vote.
Has to be seconded. Second?
You've got a second discussion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay. So we, one moment. So passes five to one. Okay. If there are no other?
Mr. Chair, there's one other that Mr. Daley and I had talked about at the financial meeting, and that was the nursing program. We wanted to report on that.
When you guys, when I was called by the President about that, that dealt with our bachelors in nursing from Eastern Michigan University. Is that's what you're asking about?
Yes.
And you would like that on the agenda?
Yeah.
What I'm thinking, we can add that because that dean will be giving us an update under administrative items on number five, the dental program update, once she completes that. That's where we would put it, but we've got a motion we second. Do we have any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Five to one. Passes, so it will be added under administrative items for the dental program update, and then after the dean completes that, we'll have the update on the EMU nursing program. Are there any other items to add to the agenda? Seeing no other additions to the agenda? I would entertain a motion to accept the agenda with amendments.
So moved.
Second.
Can we have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
And we have one nay. Okay. The motion is passed, the agenda is adopted. Item number four, communications. Jordan, do we have any communications?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we've had three letters that have been submitted by F. Jack Belzer, PC, out of Flint, Michigan. The first one is dated July sixteenth, Carmen Zanesworth Community Schools. And it states, Dear Sir or Madame enclosed herewith, please find a true copy of the order to strike unpaid personal property taxes from assessment rolls, which has been filled with the court, filed with the court. Together with a copy of the proof of service regarding same in the above referenced matter, should you have any questions concerning this letter, please feel free to contact our office at your convenience. Sincerely, F. Jack Belzer.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Yes, the next one again has been submitted by F. Jack Belzer, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, for Grambling Community Schools. Dear Sir or Madame enclosed herewith, please find a true copy of the order to strike unpaid personal property taxes from assessment rolls, which has been filled with, filed with the court, together with a copy of the proof of service regarding same in the above referenced matter. Should you have any questions concerning this letter, please feel free to contact our office at your convenience. Sincerely, F. Jack Belzer.
Thank you. Are there any others?
There's one more submitted by F. Jack Belzer, dated July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, for Lake Fenton Community Schools. And it reads, Dear Sir or Madame enclosed herewith, please find a true copy of the order to strike unpaid personal property taxes from assessment rolls, which have been filed with the court, together with a copy of the proof of service regarding same in the above referenced matter. Should you have any questions concerning this letter, please feel free to contact our office at your convenience. Sincerely, F. Jack Belzer.
Thank you very much. Are there any others?
That would conclude communications.
Thank you. Comments from the public. Do we have any comments from the public today?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the first has been submitted by Sandra Jobin of Burton, Michigan, on the topic of college future.
Okay, there we go. I don't really need one, but. My name is Sandy Jobin, and I've been to several of these meetings and tried to keep updated on what's actually going on in the community. I've been to several different city council meetings. And as far as coming to these meetings, it has been probably about a year ago that there was a discussion as to finding out what was going on with the elevators and the building themselves. My question is of what is the importance of the college and what do you base what your college is doing if it's not as far as the graduation? Is that not our main goal, is to have these kids come to the college and graduate? And if so, can somebody explain to me why we have a twenty percent graduation? And if we don't want change, then what's the use of having here? I'm just having a quorum as far as what exactly is our main goal? And, you know, we had an election, the election was won. And ever since that election's been won, it's been nothing but turmoil going on. And instead of giving anybody a chance, it's just constant battles. And so you're here for four or five hours, six hours, trying to figure out. Instead of taking the politics and worrying about what the kids and what the kids should be focused on, you got all this politics in here, and it's just mind-boggling as to what our really focus is. So what's our main focus? Is it to graduate the kids? What is a graduation? How much percentage are the kids graduating? Does anybody know? I think the community should know what exactly is going on as far as that goes. And I wanted to welcome Shonda, and hopefully they'll give you a chance. And, you know, like anybody else, that should, you know, have a chance at doing a job. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments this afternoon?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the next comment has been submitted by Percy Whitmer from the group organization Friends of Percy Whitmer Campaign. And he'll be speaking on the topic of the purpose of board and connection to the Flint community.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Percy Whitmore. My mother named me, my mother and father named me Persevere Whitmore. Sticking to the task at hand, I'm looking to speak on, one, being a Flint resident. I'm proud, I am a proud Mott Community College alum of two thousand and nineteen, where I was able to obtain my associate's degree. I don't come up here to point any fingers or put any blames on anyone. But the main purpose why I'm here, which is why anyone should be here, even on the board, is the benefit of the college. I believe that when we are looking to have our own personal agendas at hand, that we kind of lose sight of what we're actually doing. That we lose sight of what or why, even to look at the college and to see where we're located at, to see the environment that we're at. I had a mention, I mentioned to a colleague of mine about how individuals surrounding this campus, everyone should have an associate's degree. How everyone should have access to a quality job. Is that the type of conversations that we're having? Is that the type of things that we're engaging and indulging with as a board? Because when I look at words, I'm pretty simple, there's the word trust in it. Trustee. Can we trust each other? Can we be able to move forward in these acts? And briefly, I just wanted to take this moment because I've been seeing and I've been watching how everyone has been engaging, and I feel like my personal demographic is far from anyone on this board. And I would like to take this representation moment to say that our young people are present, and we are here, and we are coming. So to think that we or you all have spaces on boards, to think that it would last forever, is a bit ignorant. But also, we need to also focus on the fact that the next generation is ready for you guys. And that we're ready to take the next step in education and making sure that this experience, it's not Mott College. It's Mott Community College. The word "community" itself should ring in everyone's ears. Not a specific community, but all communities. Mott Community College is the only community college in Genesee County. We need to focus in and we need to get everything together. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The next comment has been submitted by Glenn Harris of Flint. And he'll be speaking on the topic of recent public statements.
Good evening, Glenn Harris, twenty-two-year employee. I'll preface my prepared remarks by just asking if in future board meetings, prayers of other faith traditions will be incorporated. Thank you. At the July meeting, I asked you some questions about the reasons for your choice of interim president and your vision or plan for this college that requires such a radical departure from continuity and from the norm. Having heard no answers, we may rely on clues provided by statements that board members and the interim offer to the media. Perhaps you have some agenda you are not sharing, or perhaps your reasons were more frivolous. Either way, we should be troubled, and until we get good answers, we should keep asking. Instead of answers, one thing we heard were defensive words from trustee Wolfcott that reveal a deep misunderstanding of the role of a public trustee. Quote, "It's a sad day when my vote is being taken away, and to be punished on how you vote is not right," end of quote. Your vote was counted, you were in the majority, and your choice of interim is here. And if you consider criticism of a public trustee to be punishment, well, perhaps this is not the role for you. Or perhaps you should be ready to more fully and clearly explain your actions. But this sadly has become familiar in recent years, those who wield power feeling aggrieved and playing the victim. The votes of the five of you in the majority were most certainly not taken away, and so here we are, having not heard any actual justification for the choice of an interim who says, quote, "It was really unfortunate that more time and care wasn't taken to get an understanding of what I bring to the table before making those just, you know, those disparaging comments," end of quote. I find this both hilarious and outrageous. Whose fault was the lack of time and care allowed for us to get to better understand? Who was it who voted within twenty minutes of the end of interviews to choose this person? And what was so disparaging in factual statements about her lack of experience and in questions about her reasons for pursuing the position? Yes, there is much we do not know or understand and about the candidate and about your reasons for doing so. And about the direction she and you have in mind. So why should we not be critical and skeptical at the very least? There were several other disturbing comments in recent media reports, but I must focus on one troubling but revealing assertion from the interim that, quote, "The college is an enterprise, and it offers a product, and its product is education." I believe that she believes this, but I ask the rest of you, do you believe this? Have you thought it through? Have you considered the implications of such a belief? If education is a product, what are the materials from which it is being produced? Is it prepackaged for the faculty to transmit? What sort of production facility is the college? The education as product mentality, the run it like a business mentality inevitably in all of its forms leads to a search for greater so-called efficiencies. So don't be surprised that many of us are critical and skeptical at the very least. And while I imagine that this may seem quaint to some of you, the product mentality is profoundly offensive to many actual educators because it rejects our understanding of education as process, as relationship, as the development of human capacities, as a process of encouraging students to critically examine reality, examine their assumptions, and as a process of growth into their most capable and confident selves. Ideas embodied in our essential learning outcomes. So I leave with the same questions. What are you trying to do? What is the nature of all this change that has been so frequently cited recently by the interim? Do you know what you're trying to do or not? And will you tell us either way? And when? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments this evening, Jordan?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the next one has been submitted by Joanne Mendy from Marsack Drive on the topic of Monday Township proposed megasite. My name is Joanne Mendy, and I am a resident of Monday Township. I have spoken publicly at three previous Board of Trustees meetings, urging them to retract their support of the proposed advanced manufacturing megasite in Monday Township, being promoted by the Flint Genesee Economic Alliance. I unfortunately cannot attend tonight's meeting, so thank you for reading my comments. For the Board of Trustees to make an informed decision regarding their support of the Flint Genesee Economic Alliance megasite development, it is important to know the truth about semiconductor plants. This letter will present what we know about the use of toxic material and the EPA's role, health concerns associated with a megasite semiconductor plant, economic concerns associated with the raw materials used in a megasite semiconductor plant. The board may ask, why is the focus on the semiconductor manufacturing plant and not an electric vehicle battery plant? Considering the latest decisions by major U.S. auto manufacturers to reduce production of electric vehicles, a semiconductor manufacturing plant is the next likely candidate for a megasite development. Number one, toxic materials and the EPA. When talking about semiconductors, we hear a lot about a group of toxic substances known as PFOS. PFOS is the acronym for polyfluoroacal substance. They're a group of strong carbon chain atoms surrounded by fluorine atoms, and they are used in the manufacturing of semiconductor chips as well as many other products. PFOS presents a hazard to groundwater due to wastewater dumping. Wastewater as well as water will need to be monitored. Michigan belongs to Region Five of the EPA. The EPA has increased its study on the effect of PFOS. While two laws in Michigan exist to limit and protect against exposure of toxic chemicals, required reporting of PFOS used to have only been developed in two thousand and twenty-one. Worse yet, the EPA has finally established guidelines for PFOS levels in drinking water only as of March fourteen, two thousand and twenty-three. The EPA recognizes more data and investigations are necessary as manufacturers continue to change the raw materials containing PFOS in their chip production. This late date for establishing safe levels of PFOS in drinking water alone underscores the need to reconsider support of the megasite. It is interesting to note that requests for water testing near the proposed megasite were made. These were request ID two zero two four zero seven two, West Branch, Schwartz Creek, at Genesee Valley Golf Course. Request ID two zero two four zero seven three, Howland Drain near Confluence with Hewitt Drain. Request ID two zero two four zero seven four, Flint River at Stevenson St. Bridge. The Michigan Department of Environmental Great Lakes and Energy Water Resources Division denied these requests on June fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Several interviews with Mr. Tyler Ross Mastler, Executive Director of Flint Genesee and Economic Alliance, has repeatedly noted that water quality will be a top priority. We wonder what kind of priority leads to the denial of water testing in the proposed megasite area. Remember, PFOS, due to their strong carbon atoms, never break down regardless of wastewater treatment. They are and will be in the land, air, water, and in our bloodstream for generations to come. They are commonly referred to as forever chemicals. Health concerns associated with semiconductor chip manufacturing. The Semiconductor Industry Association spends incredible amounts of resources to gain and distribute pertinent information regarding semiconductor manufacturing. distribute pertinent information regarding semiconductor manufacturing facilities. While the production of chips is a highly scientific process, a general understanding is required to provide the framework for decision-making during the making of semiconductor chips. Exposure to the worker during the water manufacturing process presents the most significant incidents. PFOS contained with the powdery material presents a potential hazard to workers from a contact dermatological as well as respiratory perspective. The chip industry continues to explore alternatives to PFOS due to increasing concerns about their persistence, bioaccumulation, and toxicity, commonly referred to as forever toxic chemicals. Though PFOS has been in use since the 1940s, companies such as 3M and DuPont have kept their health hazard secret for decades. Prevalence in industry does not equate to safety. One of the largest health studies was completed by the Semiconductor Industry Association. It included 14 U.S. manufacturing companies. While cancer is an apparent risk, one of the most startling outcomes showed spontaneous miscarriages in female workers in the first trimester of pregnancy. Children born to female workers were also found to have elevated risk of cancer, and more surprisingly, children born to male workers found more than a casual relationship of infanticide due to congenital malformation, especially heart defects. Additionally, there were indications of mutant DNA in male workers that transferred to their offspring. Number three, economic concerns associated with semiconductor manufacturing plant. There are economic risk factors to a semiconductor plant. The demand for semiconductors has caused new materials such as gallium or germanium to be used with little-known EPA safety data. The U.S. has no sizable germanium deposits, so it must import up to 100% of germanium from overseas countries, mostly China. This reality keeps a chip manufacturing plant subservient to a communist country due to the need to import raw materials. Manufacturing companies in the U.S. do not operate in a dictatorial nature. However, communist China could easily control plant operations in exchange for providing materials. China's transitioning to a political power instead of an economic manufacturing power along with increasing trade tensions with the U.S. could have a huge negative effect on obtaining materials as well as imposing high tariffs on exported goods thereby reducing U.S. profits. Semiconductors are big business. The U.S. exported 61.1 billion in 2022, so it is obvious to see why there is such a push to grab the green without looking at the detrimental long-term effects. In conclusion, we are concerned about the health hazards and permanent groundwater pollution due to the toxic materials used in semiconductor manufacturing. Guidelines for safe PFOS levels in drinking water have only been established by the EPA in March 2023. The reproductive health hazards by workers noted by the SIA study are alarming and deadly. The recent instability of trade markets with the U.S. and China could have crushing effects on the survival of new semiconductor plants in the long run. The recent master plan survey conducted in Monday Township shows that a majority of its residents are not in favor of the proposed megasite development in the advanced manufacturing overlay district. There are 45 pages of comments in the survey by residents whose common plea is how many times do we have to tell our governing body no megasite? We note that no other semiconductor chip manufacturing plant in the U.S. has churches, schools, neighborhoods, and daycare centers in close, i.e. 3.5-mile radius such as the proposed Monday Township megasite. We are asking the Board of Trustees to go to nomegasite.com and review all the resources we have compiled. This letter is written using only information contained on nomegasite.com. After such a review, we are confident you will retract your support from the megasite being promoted by Flint Genesee Economic Alliance. Thank you, Joanne Mendy, Monday Township.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments today?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The next one has been submitted by-
Jordan, one other question. Because last time you read all these and your throat went dry. Do you need one of the rest of us to read it for you?
I am good to go.
Okay. If you need a drink of water, take it.
The next comment's been submitted by Tammy Parello of Flint, Michigan, on the topic of the Monday Township megasite.
You need to hit the little green button, do the buttons.
I'm a rookie, obviously. Good evening, everyone. I would like to express my opposition to form my community college to support the proposed industrial manufacturing development in Genesee County, specifically Monday Township, by Flint and Genesee Economic Development Alliance. This proposed site is between Hill and Maple and Linden and Elms roads, and it is in an area that is zoned agricultural and residential, and it consists of 981 acres of land. Monday Township residents would be forced to bear the burden of increased traffic, noise, and polluted water, land, and air from a facility of this magnitude. This proposed site plans to pull 5 million gallons of water per day to operate this type of plant and plans to increase that amount to as much as 50 million gallons. This water usage alone is a staggering concern. However, the elimination of the contaminated water is frightening. Many toxic chemicals, as you heard from Joanne Mendy, would be involved, including lithium, cobalt, graphite, cathode, just to name a few. It has become increasingly clear that these facilities have significant potential to contaminate groundwater, including well water. As a resident of the city of Flint, I know firsthand what it is like to have contaminated water. Contaminated water is poison to people, farm animals, pets, and wildlife. I do not believe it is morally acceptable to poison a community for the profit and greed of a few.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The next comment's been submitted by Angela Wellhelm, Chandler Avenue, on the topic of board conduct. I am writing as a concerned citizen of Genesee County. Once again, five of the seven Board of Trustees continues to disappoint while proving themselves to be inept, incompetent, and lacking the basic and necessary knowledge in their role as stewards of my community college. In all the years of attending Board of Trustees meetings, I have never seen so many meetings canceled. What's going on? Do you not know how to run things, Andy Everman? Why do you continue to cancel board meetings? The dinner that was held on Monday has traditionally been held for at least the last 20 years before the Board of Trustees meeting. It's simple. Have dinner, honor the recipients, and immediately following the dinner, the Board of Trustees meeting should continue as scheduled. It is beyond troubling why this board cannot seem to manage a basic dinner and board meeting following the dinner. There was absolutely no reason that the meeting could not have been held as it has normally been for years. What is going on? It's really not that complicated or hard. Wendy Wolcott, your statement about your vote, "It's a sad day when my vote is being taken away." Your vote is not being taken away. Your integrity and ethics are rightfully being questioned. Also, it's no secret that you have advanced in the running for Genesee County Commissioner. Congratulations. My only question is why you ran as a Democrat when it's common knowledge that you are a registered Republican? Again, your ethics and integrity are in question. As for the interim president, Shonda Richardson-Snell, stating, "There is a growing trend in higher education to pull leadership from a pool of industry experts and business executives to bring a fresh eye, a fresh perspective." This is not an accurate statement. It is not a growing trend, and in fact, colleges that treat higher education as a commodity product, the degree rather than a learning process, have failed miserably, and students have been taken advantage of earned a meaningless piece of paper, leaving them swamped and in debt with a degree that does nothing for them. That is what putting someone with business acumen and no higher education experience does for a college. Trump University, sound familiar to anyone? And to be clear, Ms. Richardson-Snell, contrary to your statement that, "I actually do have eight years of higher education experience," remarkably the most important vantage point, which is that of a student, and your statement that, "I hope that the entire staff, faculty, student body, and the Board of Trustees will agree with me on that point," it's the most important vantage point, and that's where therefore. Well, I'll let you in on a little secret. Being a student for eight years by no means qualifies you to be interim president of my community college or any higher educational institution. In fact, for those who have dedicated their lives to higher education, your statements are insulting and absurd. If it wasn't bad enough that Andy Everman, the chairperson of the board, doesn't value education enough to have one, you and five board members do not value experience. This is a horror show continuing to unravel. With all due respect, Mrs. Richardson-Snell, you are ill-equipped for the position, and it is not a growing trend for businesspeople with no higher education experience to run a college, at least not successfully. Why is this college providing $15,000 stipend in- I'm sorry. That's my part. Thank you. Stipend and moving expenses. Weren't their candidates supposed to live within 20 to 25 miles of the college? Whatever happened to the Davidson address the interim president provided? It appears trustee Wolcott and others are not the only ones with a problem of ethics and integrity. If this is an interim role, why pay a stipend? Why is the interim president allowed to live in the president's house? Why is the interim president receiving an $800 in car allowance? Why is an interim president with no higher education experience earning a salary of 237,500 annually? Life insurance and much more. Sounds like failing forward to me. To make matters even worse, Andy Everman's personal attorney, who is another person with no higher education experience, is supposed to provide legal guidance to the board. This may be a game to you people, but it is certainly not to the rest of us within the community. It appears as if you are trying to dismantle the college piece by piece. Oh, and by the way, we are still awaiting an apology from Andy Everman for his vulgar statement to Jordan Kaiser in January 2023.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The next comment's been submitted by Suda Shaw from the group GCCC-W No Megasite, addressed Schwartz Creek, Michigan, on the topic of asking for denial for support to Flint Economic Alliance.
My name is Suda Shaw. I'm a resident of Schwartz Creek. Our group, Genesee County Coalition for Clean Water, aka No Megasite, have come here on three occasions to represent the Monday residents. Tonight, we wish we could be here. However, our group has three prior engagements we needed to attend. My apologies, I am writing to bring awareness of concerns to the issues surrounding these manufacturing plants. Marshall, Michigan Industrial Manufacturing Electrical Battery Plant, known as Ford Blue Oval. This plant, as a mirror to Monday Township, started with 700 acres of prime farmland, quickly becoming 2,000 for an industrial park. Originally, the state of Michigan awarded Ford $1 billion in tax credits for this project. Due to the lack of growth for electric vehicles, $1 billion was slashed to 375 million. The building size has decreased along with the promise of 2,500 jobs, now estimated at 1,700. The proposed opening has been moved to 2025. In June and July, this plant was cited by the Michigan Department of Environmental Great Lakes and Energy, known as Eagle, for several runoff issues. As a result, sediment was able to keep into the Kalamazoo River. Eagle discovered that the site didn't employ the protections necessary to stop this runoff during heavy rain, including a lack of vegetation, ineffective soil erosion control, improperly installed silt fencing, and unfinished storm drainage systems. As a result, the site was found to be in violation of state environmental protection laws and construction codes. This plant is not even up and running and already having many violations. That is not a comforting start. As Marshall Monday Township's megasite started with 980 acres, increasing to 1,300, this area has two water drains, the Lizard Drain and the Howland Drain, three regulated wetlands, two unregulated wetlands, along with the Schwartz Creek waterway running through and directly along the site. The difference is, the Marshall site is secluded and miles from the town. The Monday site is nestled among seven neighborhoods, three mobile home communities, one group home, an elementary school, three daycares, and four churches. The potential of harm immediately affects over 5,000 residents, not to mention the outlying resident homes within a three- to five-mile radius of this megasite. The Michigan Strategic Fund awarded the Flint Economic Alliance 250 million to offer 160 residents of Monday, 2.5 times the value of their home to be demolished. One area has Maple Preserve subdivision of 100 homes. This 250 million is American taxpayers' dollars. We are paying to demolish homes and crop land to possibly poison ourselves. I know that sounds hyperbolic, but that is how the Monday residents feel. Monday Township has 15,000 residents. Whether it is an electric battery or a semiconductor plant, the location is not conducive to this area. It is too populated for what the Flint Genesee Economic Alliance is wanting. The potential harm is too great a risk to bring upon these people. An alternative of housing, education, medical, or simply leave it for the farmers to continue feeding us and livestock. We appreciate the time and concern as my continues to listen to the residents of Monday. We are not a corporation. We only want our voices heard and understood. We thank you for that. For these reasons, I would implore my community college to deny support for this proposed manufacturing megasite.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments?
Thank you for your time and patience.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The next one's been submitted by Sean Murray, Flint City, on the topic of informational sessions.
I was very excited to see there was a workshop taking place on the roles and expectations of the Board of Trustees. It was certainly much needed and long overdue. I was also equally excited to learn about the panelists who were listed on the flyer. Trustee Robert Proctor, Anthony Alexander, and Dr. Lisa Novak. Those were two last-minute add-on panelists. Interim President Shonda Richardson-Snell and Diane Cotter. I'm not sure why those two were added at the last-minute as panelists. Ms. Richardson-Snell has been in her interim position for less than a month at the time of the workshop, and Ms. Cotter, who is a board member for K-12 and CLIO, has nothing of value to add. Ms. Cotter didn't even know the correct name of the college. It is my community college. Who invited her to sit on the panel? Why was she there? Her binder was an interesting accessory, much like the one the interim president used during her interview. It appeared as if the organizers were forced to have the last-minute added panelists. As I saw answers to my questions, I soon learned I was correct. Apparently, there are several attempts from the president's office to cancel the workshop. Even a last-minute effort stating liability insurance was required. Really? Is it a college? Of course, they have liability insurance. An experienced board attorney and president would know this. There were also comments about a volatile environment. Why would a workshop to educate the public on the roles and expectations become a volatile environment? How insulting to the organizers who are professionals in a professional setting. I saw two Board of Trustees in attendance, trustee Reyes and Freeman. I think it was great that they attended and showed their support, but where were the other five trustees? Where was chairperson Everman, trustee Couch, trustee Wolcott, trustee Swanson, and trustee Daley? Why weren't you there, especially since you put forth a lot of effort to cancel the workshop? Why was the board attorney there? How much did his presence cost the taxpayers at $250 an hour? I also learned that there are two police officers and the chief of police in attendance, which were requested by the president's office. How much did this cost taxpayers? This is an egregious waste of college resources, especially for a simple educational workshop. You don't need much business acumen to know this was a waste of taxpayers' money. This is a college. We are in an election year hosting workshops, and such is common practice in higher education. The president's office, the Board of Trustees, and the board attorney owe the organizers a public apology and answers as to why they tried to stop the workshop and an explanation for the unnecessary added costs to host such an event. We are looking forward to hearing your answers and apology. Shame on the people who forced the late added panelists in several failed attempts at canceling the workshop. Whatever your goals were, they failed miserably. Kudos to the Women's League of Voters, the Black Professional Alliance, and the Enlighten and Ignite Committee. I hope you put on more workshops. And we are still waiting a public apology for Andy Everman for his distasteful and unprofessional comment to Jordan Kaiser in January 2023 we have not forgotten.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We have another that's been submitted by Bill Crandall of Crimson King Court on the topic of Board of Trustees conduct.
I am a taxpayer, a former student, and a longtime fan of my community college. I am very disappointed in the Board of Trustees members who are generating negative press with recall attempts and constant criticism of hiring of the new president of the college. There are seven board members for a reason. Each has a vote that needs to be respected in the democratic process. The two board members who did not vote for the new president should accept the results and move forward. There are many potential students that are trying to decide-
There are many potential students that are trying to decide where they will attend college, and the noise could certainly push them away from Mott CC. It is time to put the focus back on the best interest of the students and the college. This board needs to come together and give the new president a chance to perform her duties without all the shenanigans. She brings a wealth of experience as a business executive, organizer, and leader. Anyone that says the college is not a business is sadly mistaken.
Does that conclude the reading of that one?
That concludes that.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments this evening?
That looks like it is the completion of comments from the public.
Thank you very much. Unfinished business, item 1.98, amendment to board policy 5008, board/employee communications. This is the second reading. Is there a motion to move forward with this at this time?
I'll make the motion.
Pardon?
I second that.
So, motion to move forward, and there's a second. Are there any...is there any discussion?
Let me just interject here. There's another item on the agenda under new business, which relates to also amending 5008. And so, I just want to point out that if both matters were passed, it could create a conflict in a way that 508008 is read and interpreted. Beyond that, I have no other comment.
So, when you look down your agenda, individual items, 2.34 is the first read on of the 5008. The other one that has been brought forward by the Policy Committee. So, we can pass this one or not. And then, at the next meeting, we would bring forward the 5008 from 2.34, and we would decide whether we vote to move that one into place. So, are there any questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Mr. Daley.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
No.
Is that a yes?
It's a no.
A no, okay. Mr. Swanson.
Yes.
Mrs. Couch?
Yes.
Mrs. Walcott?
Yes.
And myself is... A yes. The motion passes. Five to one. Jeff, you added an item to the agenda. Could you bring that forward now?
Yes, I will. Wendy, we hang up to... Chairman, please. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that in accordance with policy 1321, and we had voted on this about a year ago. It was from June 26 of '23. I would like to hire the firm of MDD Accountants for the duties. Well, the duties shall include, but not be limited to, review and analyzing school financial data, past and present audit reports, assisting board members on the documents that it should review and analyze, and provide advice on issues related to the college finances, and otherwise assist the board in its role of providing financial oversight for the college.
Second.
Motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion?
I...
Yes, Mr. Freeman.
So, I'm still kind of baffled at why this is needed and necessary. It's an additional expense for something that we already have a CFO, who provides us any information, any and all information, that we need. The fact that I know how to read financials, I've been involved in multiple audits. It's clear to me, I'm sorry that you don't feel that this is something that you have expertise in, but you are the treasurer. So, I just think that this board has been spending money at an alarming rate. People, you know, non-refundable fees for conferences that people don't show up at. We pay for hotel, registration. You know, I've just...I've never, in 13 and a half years, I've never seen this level of spending. I don't understand what above and beyond, you know, you've been talking about this for a year, that you need help to understand your job as a treasurer while you've been doing this for a year. It seems that you should have learned something. So, I just...the manner in which people are being brought in and how they're being brought in, I find troubling, lack of transparency in how this is being done, lack of procurement. You know, we are a body. We individually don't hire people. We make the decision on who is brought in to provide us with specific expertise. And yet, we have now, you know, do I get to start hiring people? And to help me do my job better for the college? So, I just, I think that this is a frivolous expense and unnecessary.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? Jeff?
Well, Mr. Freeman, I too can read a financial statement. This is as much for the other board members as it is for me. You're right, I am the treasurer, and I can read all the reports. But you voted on this a while back, well, a year ago. And it passed then, we just hadn't done anything about it. And now, you bring this up. Well, you know, I'm sorry you feel that way, but I feel it's for the best interest of the college, and it's up for a vote. If the board doesn't want to do it, the board will vote no.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, roll call vote on Jeff's proposal. In accordance with board policy 1321, the board approves the June 26, 2023 regular meeting. He has selected the firm of the MDT Accountants, 3155 West Pig Beaver Road, Troy, Michigan. The duties shall include, but not be limited to, the review and analyzing school financial data, past and present audit reports, assisting board members on the documents issued, reviewed, and analyzed, provide advice on issues related to the college's finances, and otherwise assist the board in its role of providing financial oversight for the college. Roll call vote. Mr. Daley.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
No.
Mr. Swanson.
Yes.
Mrs. Couch?
Yes.
Mrs. Walcott?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The motion passes, five to one. Thank you very much. New business, item 2.31, the treasurer's report.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. So, I don't know if it's due to connection issues down here, but there were two more public comments that came through. Would you like me to read them now or go through at the end of the meeting?
What is the consensus of the board? Would you like to hear them right now, and we can put Larry off for a moment?
Read them right now.
Read them right now. Wendy? Jeff? Michael? Yes, and Sue? Yes. Sorry about that, Larry. Jordan, do we have any other comments?
Yes, so the next one has been submitted by Bobby Walton, Davidson, Michigan, on the topic of amendments to bylaws. I noticed your chairman has continued to drive, in his drive to take over the administration by the college, by many and adjusting your bylaws. The proposed amendments to bylaw 5008, read for the first time tonight, is further evidence. There is no way the board can be held accountable for what is proposed to this amendment as the chair of the board. If this amendment is accepted, Everman is free to do as he pleases. The adjustment to bylaw 5008 has a major flaw. There is no system within the proposed wording of bylaw 5008 to require accountability to the people to whom the college belongs, the residents of the Mott Community College District. If the board sets this bylaw as a standard for guiding communication between the board and staff or faculty at Mott, where is the authority to make sure these standards are adhered to? If these amendments are accepted, who is the authority, and where is the point of accountability to protect the administrative staff and faculty of my college from board overreach? Expectations and controls are built in every contract or delegated authority given by this board to those in the administration and through your other bylaws. These controls are carried out through board oversight. Contracts are agreed to and are very well-defined. However, through the terms of the proposed amendment to bylaw 5008, there is nothing to limit the board in meddling with the administration of the college. There is nothing to make the board accountable for any action they make through a pretense of communication, what makes sure guidelines and expectations are followed. If there's one thing about the actions of the board of trustees that causes me the most concern, it is the complete disregard shown by the majority of the board to the public interest. We have an interest in what you do. The laws that formed Mott Community College were formed for the public interest, using public funds and resources. The majority of this board have shown a false sense of what they call their fiduciary responsibility in carrying out their duties. That is, the board must represent the public. Those who elected you in overseeing the workings of the college, it is common to assume this applies mainly to your financial and property management duties. But it is more. It is comprehensive and includes your responsibility to protect the public interest. You must be ethical and open in your communication with the faculty and staff over all aspects of your duties. The administration of the college has been delegated to the president of the college. This is done through law and bylaw. The only way to ensure this delegation has the power of enforceability is to have bylaws and procedures that require it and are enforceable. I question your ethics and your recognition of the public interest by the very wording and intent of this amendment to 5008. It is not enforceable. So, I leave with this question. When this board prepares to act with impunity to assume control of Vermont with no breaks, who oversees you?
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments?
And there's one more comment that's been submitted by Gene Hill of Flint on the topic of better communication to the public. So, we have a new interim president of the college. I sincerely hope that she is planning to introduce herself more to the student body. Since her installation, I, as a student, haven't heard a peep from her. I want to know who my interim president is. She says she wants to get to know her. Well, I have some questions for her, and I'm sure others do too. Not just students, but the general public as well. We want to know who is going to lead us into this new chapter. Mott Community College has been around for almost 101 years, and I sincerely hope we have 101 more. But first, we need to know that the interim president understands the gravity of her position. She is now a part of a team that is supposed to find her new permanent president of the college. That is some responsibility, and I sincerely hope she's listening with an objective, but yet empathetic and compassionate ear. The concerns of the public are valid and deserve to be addressed. I sincerely hope that the board is watching her with as much scrutiny as they did with Dr. Beverly. I sincerely hope that the interim president can prove to us that she deserves the job, because if not, I have to wonder about the board members that voted for her. I already have my opinions, but I challenge certain board members to change them. Listen to us and actually act on what we say. We elected you. We deserve to be listened to, and if we feel we aren't, we will be going to the polls in November to let it be known.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments?
And that concludes, my apologies again.
Thank you very much, Jordan. Item 2.31, treasurer's report. Larry.
Good evening. I will go through this very briefly, since we did talk about it quite a bit in the committee meeting and also the informational session. So, overall, the revenues of the college for the one month are at 18.9% compared to 12.9% last year. Expenditures at 5.19% compared to 5.3%. Our total assets are up about 5.1 million, and then our net assets are up about 5.2 million overall. Excuse me. So, that's, again, we are the first month in the fiscal year, and those are the highlights.
Thank you very much. Don't go away. Are there any questions for Larry before he steps down? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion now for item 2.31, the treasurer's report for July of 2024.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion from Wendy. We have a second from Jeff. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is passed. Thank you very much, Larry.
Thank you. I think the next two are mine as well.
So, you're going to stay here?
I'll say, yeah. Rod will come down, I think.
Okay. Item 2.32, IDS Design Resolution for Gorman Mechanical Upgrade. Design aboard for action. Gentlemen?
Do we have slides for that? In their agenda package? Chair, Board, President?
Could you turn the microphone on?
Chair, Board, President, fellow board members. Facilities presented multiple upgrades to the board in February. Tonight, we're going to bring two replacement options to the board. The first being Gorman Science Building. We are looking for an upgrade on that. Thanks, Larry. Excuse me just a second. We have two boilers in there, one chiller, and an air handling unit. The boilers are 29 years old. The chiller is 20 years old. Difficult to find replacement parts. An estimated 20% energy savings through this upgrade. The design proposal cost only, which will be through IDS, is $249,000. The next proposal is Wagner Building. It's for an elevator replacement. It was installed in 1977, part of an elevator continued replacement plan that we have for the college. It's difficult to find parts, and it is at end-of-life. It does not meet new elevator codes additionally. This elevator would cost $482,427. Additionally, if I could, through the president, add a G-Ramp update, if that's okay to do. I did have all three together.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We have two items, 2.32 and 2.33.
That's correct.
Where is this about G-Ramp? It would be number nine? On number 11?
Administrative items under president's report.
Yeah, but where is the report?
Pardon?
Where is the report for that?
Well, the report is supposed to be delivered to us under the president's report, and it is item number nine for the parking garage report. So, I'd like to keep it in order unless the board's pleasure is to change it. Okay. Let's stick with the first two.
Okay.
Okay. Item 2.32, the IDS Design Resolution? Be it resolved, the Charles Stewart Mount Community College Board of Trustees authorizes the administration to award the design for the Gorman Mechanical Upgrades to the Integrate Design Solution LLC, 1441 West Lawn Lake Road, Suite 200 Troy, Michigan, for a cost in the amount of $249,000, zero cents. Do we have a motion for this?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion from Wendy. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? If there is no second, this motion will fail. Going once. Going twice? I'm sorry, sir, this motion has failed.
Okay.
Item 2.33, Wagner Building Elevator Purchase Award. Make sure that I've got the right one. The Charles Stewart Mount Community College Board of Trustees authorize the administration to award the purchase and installation of a new elevator to Kone Elevators, 1 Kone Court, Mullen, Illinois 61265, for a cost in the amount of $482,427, zero cents. Is there a motion to move this forward?
Mr. Chair, I just want to clear something up. The other day, it was brought to my attention that the Wagner Building, that they were...
We need a motion for this first.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Okay, Wendy, you have some comments?
It was brought to my attention the other day that what was going on down there at the Wagner Building, where workforce and economic development was, that they were 100% moving everybody out of there and bringing them to here at the RTC Building. So I had went over there and I've asked around. I asked people what was going on. I said, is this true? A lot of them didn't know what was going on. So then I spoke with somebody else today that is in charge of that, and he verified that what's happening is they're only moving people out of there to here just so they can fix the elevator, and then they're going to bring them back. I'm trying to clear up a rumor.
Okay. So you would like a clarification before we go forward? Is that correct? Yes. Larry, since you're in charge of facilities, I think you might be able to address this. And if not, do we have Robert Matthews? That's your group of people, isn't it? Maybe you could give us some insight into what's happening. Don't go too far away, Larry, in case we need you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Interim President, and Board Members. So my understanding is that the elevator project, there is some lead time, of course, for the elevator, but once we get to the point that the elevator is being installed, that we would not be able to be in the building because of the limitations with folks being able to access the second floor. So at that point, the staff would have to be relocated, but the staff would, upon completion, be able to return to the facility.
Okay. Before you leave, when we did the interview for the interim president, she spoke of our strategic plan, Madam President, Madam Interim President. It's early in your time here, but you spoke to facilities assessment have not, were not addressed in our last strategic plan. Given the fact that the age of this building, the location off of our campus, is this something that you would consider important to look at before we spend close to a half a million dollars on this project?
Yes, it should be evaluated whether the investment is warranted, given the age of the building. My understanding is that was part of the original study. And Rod could add more details to that.
So in 2019, IDS did a comprehensive study of everything on main campus, including Wagner Building and remote campuses as well, and they gave us grades on everything. So that's what has been guiding this proposal's moving forward.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments from Board Members?
Mr. Chair, if we end up moving everyone over here, who's to say that we can't just leave them here?
So I don't know that we're able to make that assessment yet, and I'm not for sure that everyone, given all of the other projects we have going on, will be able to move into this building. So I think we are probably how far along before we're able to make some decisions about where folks would have, about when we'd even have to leave the building.
Best guess, maybe eight, nine months from now. So these elevators, obviously, are made to order. They're products specific, and it takes about one year from the time of commitment before that would be completed for installation.
Yes, John. Make sure to turn your microphone on, please.
And what you're asking for with the elevators, from the time the con... So are you, how confident are you in that one-year figure is, I guess what I'm getting at, because everything else I'm seeing is a stretch, usually two to three years?
So we just received an update for the Mount Memorial Building elevator, and that still is on schedule for the end of April. So we are monitoring that, so gauged on that. We feel fairly confident.
Thank you.
Yes, Wendy?
I have another question. When I went over there, I spoke with numerous employees there, and they had, four of them told me how they themselves already got stuck in the elevator for over an hour, sometimes two hours at a time. Two of the females were very, very upset about this. So is this something that we can wait for eight months to get them back over here because what happens for the ones that can't do the stairs? And they're forced, they're forced to take the elevator.
So it's my understanding that if the elevator is down, we are no longer ADA compliant, which is why we would have to relocate individuals during the construction process?
Well, they had me get in the elevator, and then there was numerous people that got in the elevator. There's a sign that says it's down, but tons of people are still using it. I spoke with another lady down there that was working, and she had told me that she had a really bad back and everything, and she specifically has to put her bags on the elevator to get them up and down because she can't make it up and down the stairs. So I took the elevator twice when I was there amongst other people.
Was the elevator being serviced at the time that you were there? As far as testing through Kone?
No.
And there was a sign saying the elevator was out of service?
Yes, I took a picture of it.
Okay. I do have our maintenance manager here, if you would like to get an answer to that.
Good evening, everyone. There are a couple of things. One, there's, since I've been there, one report of someone stuck on the elevator. It was less than 40 minutes. Still unacceptable, but the two-hour mark, I don't believe. The sign being on the elevator would not be from maintenance or Kone, so I'm not sure who put the sign in the elevator. I would take the picture if you had it.
I don't name names. Anytime I speak, you'll hear me say this man, this woman. I never say any names whatsoever, so I wasn't going to go there on that one.
So Larry, you've been here long enough. We had that building for sale, and we asked $1.5 million for it, and we had nobody make a bid on it. We're putting money into a building that we have, we'll find out more about our enrollment this evening. Do we really have a need to be offsite, or should we be consolidating our business on this campus? Because we're going to continue, we'll need a roof. The HVAC system will eventually need to be upgraded. We're going to continually pour money into that building. And should we not be on a campus where we are maintaining our footprint for the community?
So the $1.5 million predates me. I do not recall that, so I can't speak to that. As far as consolidating, clearly, we need to consolidate where we can, but Robert Matthews, who oversees that area, would be better adept at making those decisions and terminations since he is there on a daily basis. I think, I mean, I'll let you speak to it. I heard you say you didn't think you could get everybody over here. So, I mean, that is an assessment that I guess we could look at, but I don't know that we're in a position to say that, or Robert is, that we could get everybody in this, in the RTC building. Because I know he's moved quite a bit over here already, but I don't know that we've got space for everyone.
Okay. So are there any other questions? The next comment that I would have to my Board Members, if you vote this up, we move forward with the elevator. We could vote it down. An option to vote it down, but then to bring a motion forward where we have a study done so we have a better understanding of what our resources are, what we can work with at the college to accommodate this group of people, and how to best serve our community in keeping costs under control. So you have two options, and then if we vote it down, what we could decide to move forward to do. Jeff, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I have one question. So you don't think you can get everybody over here? I understand that. And there's no plans on selling that building in the near future, correct?
No, I'm aware of none.
Okay.
The last time we did that, Jeff, was when we moved the auto program over here. We, everyone is located in the RTC building. There was a specific format that you had to have your classes in. I forget the name of that. And unless you did that, it was board policy, you could not teach in this building. Now, I don't know if that was changed when I wasn't on the board, because now we have other groups in this building that don't have their program in WIDS. So it seems confusing.
Well, how long would it take to study to see if it can be consolidated here, or if we absolutely need to put the money in that building?
So let me say this, and I just forgot to mention this, is that, so we have the Pearl Building that's going to be going under some substantial renovation. All those people are going to have to be displaced for a short period of time, two years. We also have HVAC in Curtis Mount Building that's going to need to be done with all the tunnels, what are those? Thank you, ductwork up above, and so those people are going to have to be displaced as well. So this is not a very good time to try to consolidate people into spaces that are already going to be utilized with all these displacements.
And I understand that. I'm just, if we didn't have to put the money into that building, if it's not going to serve a purpose long-term, why do it? But you're telling me that there's no other way, that we're going to need to put the money into that elevator because of everything else going on at the school?
Yeah, and again, this would be Robert and his, I mean, he's, like I said, he's there on a daily basis, but again, we are trying to get ahead of these maintenance things so we don't run into the same thing at MMB with the elevator that went down. So we have a tremendous amount, a number of projects that have to be completed, and this is going to be, and we only have a short period of time with the bonds that we issued. We have three years to spend those dollars. So when we prioritize these projects, back in February, we brought all these to you, letting you know what the plan was. And so now we are systematically trying to mark these off as we go, but this is not something that was just thought of in the last two weeks or a month. This has been in the planning stages for quite a while, since 2019.
Larry, I understand that. Excuse me. I just, you don't want to throw money into a black hole. And if it's not going to be, you know, if we're going to use it, I would be on board with putting the money in it, and I'm just wanting to make sure that that's the proper way to go.
And I completely understand that, I really do. So I'm going to let Robert speak to the use and the space because I really, I don't think I could give you an educated response to that.
Before you go?
Well, on that leaving.
Yes. We have a satellite campus in Clio that we're not fully utilizing at this point. Could we locate the individuals up there until we can get things situated elsewhere?
I think the suggestion about doing a review of spaces would really be a good idea, and I would just say just one caveat. As we do the assessment, for example, now, we would look at our current course offerings and needs, but given the lead time that is projected, it will be a little difficult to project, for example, a classroom that's used 50% of the time this semester, might not be that way three semesters from now. So, you know, there will be, there will be still some sort of unknown variables, but I think it would be worth looking at assessing the use of, I think, we've talked about maybe various spaces, so I think that might be at least worth doing.
Larry, you talked about this wasn't done just in a couple of weeks, and you went back to 2018. So we've had that type of lead time, and we have things throughout the college that have routinely not been taken care of, and now we're at a short timeframe to get things finished with the bondage money that we have. So this doesn't seem to be your all's fault that it wasn't brought forward, but we now need to have some systematic planning to get things done, because as our colleague, Trustee Freeman, had said once before, we can have all this money, but if there's not the capacity out there to get the job done, it's hard to get it done on a tight timeframe. So do you guys want to move it forward, or do you want to have a plan made? And I think there's one other person we need to hear from, and that's our interim president, because she keeps moving her hands. Does she want to say something?
You have a motion on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. We've had debate, trying to find out, get all the answers, and I'm wondering if she has further input into this.
I was going to reiterate what I, as you mentioned, that I had alluded to earlier. A capacity utilization study is an important step that we need to take, one that's tied into our forecasted enrollment and include that longer-term plan in looking at where we anticipate needing, where we anticipate needing additional space. What Larry and Robert are sharing is one of the true constraints that we would have even with those results, because we do indeed need the extra space to move various operations from place to place as the repairs are taking place. One consideration that we do need to look closely at is the value of these buildings in connection with the amount of investment that we are going to continue to put into them. So a longer-term study that looks out the length of the life expectancy and forecasted repairs and maintenance that are going to be anticipated over that time period versus the value of the building. And so that is the type of study... And so, that is the type of, of study that needs to take place in order to find where that cutoff is in terms of how much additional funding do we continue to pour into the buildings? There is a break even there, or a cutoff point. And it has to do with the valuation of, of the building. Now, that's the pure number view. On the other hand, we do have a finite space of campus. And we, we need to ensure that as these plans take place, we have room to accommodate all of the activities that are underway. So, it will be somewhat of a balancing act. This is a big bill. This is $500,000 into a building that is probably not worth, you know, and again, this is in market terms, and that, that's not the true value of it. The true value of it is that it houses our students. And so, this is where the balance comes in. But there's no two ways around it. It's a, it's a lot of money to put into a building that's probably not worth much more than that. But the value to, to the college is being able to continue to house the students, being able to continue to run the programs, and to be able to have the capacity to move the activities around as the repairs are being, are taking place. It's hard for me to swallow, too. I, it's a, it is, it is a big number. And yet, I have confidence in the team that through the bidding process, that the best price was found. And right now, we do need the space.
Thank you. Trustees, are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Freeman?
So, I've heard people talk about valuation of real estate. Basically, what we're investing in a property, if we are going to bring the, you know, I agree, we have to look at the value of the building based on the space and what that's providing us with. But if we are going to go down to the minutia of the value of the real estate, I would rather have an actual appraisal of real estate done. Because actually, I deal with real estate and Flint all the time, and I think you're a little off on the building value being only $500,000. There's a lot of real estate development going on in the downtown area.
I didn't say that the building was worth anything.
You said, you said not much more than, you had the value of the building be not much more than the cost of the improvement. So, just saying, as I say, if it's going to be considered, we should actually have a real professional provide us with the value of our real estate if that is going to be a consideration within this discussion. But I think that, I go back to your point where I do agree with, it is the value of the real estate to us as a college, and its proximity, it's, it doesn't meet our needs. That's probably the most important thing about that. And making the investments, and because investments are just, you know, depreciation, you know, the fact that things just, you don't buy something or you don't make an investment, and then you're good forever and ever. Things always need to be upgraded and refreshed and brought up to current code.
Thank you. Madam President, did you have a comment? No, okay. Are there any other comments from the board members? We will do a roll call vote on this. Item 2.33. The Charles Stewart Mott Community College Board of Trustees authorizes the administration toward the purchase and installation of a new elevator to Cone Elevators, 1 Cone Court, Malone, Illinois, 61265, for the cost of $482,427.00. Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Couch?
No.
Wendy?
Yes.
And myself will vote yes. The motion passes. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yes. Just a minute, let me get my, your piece right in. Your microphone.
If I could have your indulgence before they go away, I'd like to have a little further discussion on 2.32. And that was a motion that failed for lack of a second, not coming to the board. And my question in here is that you, you talk about IDS being one of two architects of record for the college. How did you select IDS to do this? Or were there two people that were the play-off?
No, great question. So, I'll go and answer.
Yeah.
So, when we went to the board and brought the resolutions for the two architects, because we had so much work going, we decided that we really wanted a local architect because for the smaller projects, because we have so many of those that go on, and the larger ones, IDS is much more capable of handling those because of the resources and the staffing that they have. So, any projects that are large in scope, we go to IDS. Because we have tried going to some other local architects that we've had on the larger projects, and they just could not staff it. So, it was a, not a, the ideal outcome of those. So, that, that's how we decided on IDS. DeClemente is the other architects. They are work, actually working right now on a usability study of our buildings right now. So, that's the first thing that we engaged them to do, to come, come through and look at their buildings and, and the space and the utilization. So, that, that's what they're working on. We actually probably could use four architects, honestly, with everything that we have going on right now. Excuse me.
And this is a question to the, to the chair and, and probably to our board attorney on, okay, this failed for lack of a second. What's the process of bringing it back for reconsideration?
Bill, do we address that to you, do we address that to the parliamentarian? Well, it, it was on the agenda.
Yes.
So, it's not about amending the agenda. It can be brought back if somebody wishes to bring it back. And again, it'd have to be seconded and approved. But since it was on the agenda, it does not, if it was not on the agenda and it wasn't added by way of additions to the agenda, then it would take five votes to bring it at this point in time. But since it was on the agenda.
So, if the votes are there to reconsider, or were there to, the votes were there to reconsider, we could reconsider it at this meeting?
Yes.
I move we reconsider 2.32 at this meeting?
Your motion to reconsider, you started to ask a question.
I just want to make one comment. So, the 249, keep in mind, it is a lot of money. But 180 is going to the architects. The $69,000 is in fees, permits, licenses. Rod wanted to bring this forward at the 180, and I said, no, bring it forward at the full amount that we know it's going to cost to do this part of it. And just to be transparent with you, to let you know what the total cost of this would be. So, keep in mind, it's 180 for the architects, they're estimating $69,000 in fees.
Thank you.
I'd like to second Trustee Daley's motion to bring it back up.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? And this motion is to reconsider it.
In looking at this, first of all, having more experience than I would like to admit to with older Boilers, that it is difficult to get components for them. And we need to start, if we're going to continue to utilize that building as one of our assets, then we need to look at replacing those furnaces. Because with a 29-year-old furnace system, and they'll, they'll have to read, that's, that's a dinosaur, and it's going to have to be completely replaced. The reason that I didn't, did make the second, the first time around, was simply because of the fact that I, it was not clear to me how the selection was made for the architect that did the work on this firm. And that was answered. So, I would request the board reconsider this.
So, right now, your motion is to reconsider bringing it back to the agenda. You've made the motion, Mr. Freeman has made the second. We're now having discussion. You had the right for first speaking. Is there any other trustees that would like to speak to the issue of bringing this back? Seeing none. The roll call vote this time is to bring the item back up, and then we will make a motion as to that after it's brought back up. Roll call vote, Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Couch?
Yes.
Mrs. Walcott?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The motion has passed. Now, we have the opportunity to bring item 2.32, IDS Design Resolution for Gorman Mechanical Upgrade. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Other discussion on this?
I appreciate my colleagues' indulgence on this. This is the right thing to do, to be reconsidering this.
While this doesn't go, remember, we're not putting in a new furnace or air conditioning. This is just the study at this point. So, and I have had some concerns over this because of the heat in the summer with the chemicals that are in there. It could have been a disaster. Yes, Mr.?
I just, I just want to make sure that we understand, it's not a study, it's a design. It is actual design, so it will be designed to be implemented, yes.
Okay. All right, so the motion reads, "The Charles Stewart Mott Community College Board of Trustees authorizes the administration to award the design for the Gorman Mechanical Upgrades to Integrated Design Solution LLC, 1441 West Long Lake Road, Suite 200, Troy, Michigan, 48098, for a cost of $249,000.00." We have a motion, we have a proper second, we have had no further discussion, a roll call vote. Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Couch?
Yes.
Mrs. Walcott?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The motion has passed. Congratulations, gentlemen. Item 2.34, Amendment to Board Policy 5008. First reading, this is not for action. Are there any questions or comments to the committee? Seeing none. We will move on to item 2.35. John Daley, you had a revision to the president's contract. Please turn your microphone on.
I move to amend the contract of the interim president, her contract of employment, specifically to delete from the existing contract the following. And this would be, this would be what would be deleted. Quote, "Therefore, employee will seek approval from the Board of Trustees before entering into any, entering into extending, hiring, discharging any contracts of employment for any members of the executive cabinet, CVP, student academic success, AVP, HR, chief technology officer, chief financial officer, and administrative officer, AVP, institutional advancement, and AVT workforce, and economic development, and the president's office staff, i.e. the chief of staff, board retention coordinator, board relations coordinator, and executive assistant." This, that's, that is my motion that will require a second.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on this?
Could I, could I get some clarification on the implication of this motion?
Mr. Daley, you can speak on this.
The implication, the clarification is that it puts into the hands of the president-elect the, it removes the restriction that was on the president-elect to have to get the Board of Trustees approval on basically a significant number of personnel actions. And it gives her the full, puts in her hands the full powers of the presidency.
So, basically, you're empowering the acting president to discharge without any sort of consultation with the board, basically unchecked?
My understanding is that this, the authority, if it's granted in this, would be the same as the previous president had.
Any further comments? Seeing none. A roll call vote, and Mr. Daley, could you read that motion again so everybody has it? And then when you've completed that, could you pass it to our parliamentarian for the permanent record?
I move to amend the contract of employment for the interim president, specifically to delete from the contract the following language. Quote, "Therefore, the employee will seek approval from the Board of Trustees before entering into extending, hiring, discharging any contracts of employments for any members of the executive cabinet, CVP, student academic success, AVP, HR, chief technology officer, chief financial and administrative officer, AVE, institutional advancement, and AVP workforce, and economic development, and the president's office staff, i.e. the chief of staff, board relations coordinator, and executive assistant."
Thank you. Motion has been made, it was properly seconded. Seeing no further debate? You have further debate?
One comment. Just, I, I have heard from a number of people on campus about everyone being on edge with the transition, with how everything's been done, you know, even down to moving public comment past, making the decision, not listening. I don't know that this is really going to be a move that will resonate well on campus and engender some level of, a sense of transparency and/or confidence. So, I, I just, I don't think that the optics of this are really good at this present time.
I believe that in order to have the president, the, the Board of Trustees is a part-time group. We meet once a month normally. For that, we're all volunteers. It would be impossible for the Board of Trustees to oversee and manage the hiring at a, at a detailed level. And that's where that contract puts it. This gives her, puts into her hands the same authority that the previous president has, or had when she was here, with regards to the hiring of personnel. So, I don't understand your concern with that, that if it's good for one, it should be good in the interim here.
Any further comments from the board members? Roll call vote.
I do have to your point through the chair. The method in which we hired the interim was in no way similar to that which we brought in our president, our former president. So, you look at it as an apples-to-apples, but we vetted over months and months, not 20 minutes. So, I would say at this point in time, I don't agree with your assessment that this is an apples-to-apples conversation.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Michael, you say that we, we've done this over 20 minutes. I was in the same meeting you were in. We did it how you wanted to do it as far as bring it to the person. you were in. We did it how you wanted to do it as far as bring it to the personnel meeting. You chose two. Sue chose two. I chose one.
Excuse me, Wendy. Mr. Freeman, the floor has been given to Wendy.
I'm still talking. And I chose one.
Right, Wendy, but don't mischaracterize this.
Can I finish what I'm saying, please?
Please, no, you can't.
So, we got 25 applications, correct? A through Z, right? Okay. This is what the public don't know, because you put, you spin the narrative in the community. So, we chose five. We chose five. And they were letters. We didn't know if they were male or female, Michael. We did not know if they were ma-
Mr. Freeman, please contain yourself, Mr. Freeman.
There is a spin on the community, what you are doing.
Mr. Chair, call the question.
Can I please, no, no, no. I'm going to finish what I have to say, because I always stay quiet for everybody else, what they want me to do. So, what you said was, you chose two, Sue chose two, I chose one. We didn't know if they were male, female. We had no idea about anything. There was five letters that we chose. For two weeks, Michael, Shonda was letter J, that we know now. You didn't say one thing for two weeks. The day that we got the name and we found out who she was, I get a text message, and you said, "Did you know that she's a conservative?" I would have never even looked that up. And then you're upset with her, or with me for voting that way, and I had no idea. And I didn't know who she was. I challenge you. I challenge you. I challenge you. I challenge you and show me proof. As God is my witness, I never met her until the day she came here. And I challenge you to show me proof, because you're going to look like a fool and you're going to owe me an apology. What's going to happen?
Mr. Freeman?
So, as you said that, when I did contact you, your response was, "I don't know who that is. Is she black? Is she white?" And I said, "I really don't know either way."
Is she black? Is she white?
You said exactly, verbatim, you said that. And then, you said, "I've never heard of her." And then you told me-
It's true.
And then you told me, "Well, she seems to have a lot of financial experience."
Mr. Chair, call the question.
Right, because we've had these for two weeks. That's what it was. No, hold on. We've had these for two weeks. And you're, you're making it sound like we only had 20 minutes to design.
Call the question.
We have a question that's been called. Madam Parliamentarian, could you tell, Mr. Parliamentarian, whichever one's doing it today? What's that?
Her title's administrative assistant.
Administrative assistant. Okay. So, Mr. Attorney, could you go to the question that we have just called?
I'm not sure. The motion was reread.
Okay. So, we're at the question. It's been reread. We had further debate. We've got a second. I want to make sure we've got the question that we're going to vote on now. Roll call vote. Mr. Daley, do you remember the motion that you made that you've now passed on to our person?
Yes.
Yep?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Freeman?
No.
No. Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Couch?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Your contract has been amended, interim president. Thank you. Special presentations. I'd like to call a five-minute recess. We are at ease for five minutes. We've reconvened. Everyone is back now. Special presentations. Could you please come forward now? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here today to present to you about the presidential search. You should have, the slide shows up there, but you also have slides in your packet. I'm going to start with, next slide, please. I'm going to start with the request for proposal from the highlights. The contractor or firm must have 10 years of successful experience, and the contractor or firm must have conducted three successful executive-level searches for community colleges or universities. The firm or contractor must also attest to our requirements, responsibilities, and expectations, which include meeting with the board to identify the desired characteristics of the candidate, facilitating focus group sessions to solicit input from various interest groups and stakeholders, creating a position profile for the recruitment purposes, and then also doing the recruitment, the identification and solicitation of, for the applications. Next page, please. They also will facilitate the process to identify the semifinalists and finalists, complete background checks and in-depth reference interviews, schedule the interviews, and then assist in the transition of that candidate to mock community college. The RFP is out. They have to submit a questionnaire for evaluation and selection. Next slide, please. As I said, the RFP is out. The deadline for responding to that RFP is September 9th, so not next Monday, but the following Monday. There needs to be a board decision on who will evaluate and select the firm. That can either be done by the board of trustees, or you can delegate that to human resources to make that selection based on the RFP responses that are received. We also are asking for you to make a decision on the process to be used, which includes the timeline for making that selection of the candidate, and then also the position profile process. And what that means is, how are we going to create the position profile? We do have a position profile that was used in 2014 that can be provided to you, or provided to the stakeholders that are included in this. We could do a forum that invites people in to talk about what they would like to see in that position profile, or we could do a survey to solicit that input. Obviously, one of those options is faster, is a faster process than the other. And then also, to determine the screening committee, which would, we would have to also consider union contract requirements. Next slide, please. I'm going to review the last presidential search that took place in 2014, just as an informational item for you. So, we first identified a national search firm, and then we created the search timeline. The third thing that happened is we worked with the national search firm to establish the position profile that I referenced, which was used in the final job description and advertising materials. When we did this in 2014, we went the forum route, and we got input from the community, students, and employees. The search firm that was selected then conducted the recruitment process, and there was a screening committee identified. They narrowed the pool to the semifinalists. The screening committee last time included 19 members. There were four board members, six community leaders, five staff and faculty union leaders, two leaders from the college, one executive cabinet member, and one student. That screening committee reviewed applications, conducted the semifinalist interviews, and identified the finalists. Next slide, please. They also conducted references on the finalists, and then invited finalists on campus for a visit. That visit was two days in length. During that visit, the candidates interviewed with the board of trustees. They participated in candidate forums to include community, faculty, staff, leaders, and students. Those were separate forums. They also had dinner with the board. They participated in a campus tour, and they were also taken on a tour of Flint, of the Flint community. Next slide. The board of trustees then reviewed feedback from the campus visits. They selected a candidate, made an offer, and negotiated a contract, and determined the start date. Next slide, please. The search firm role back in 2014 was to work with the board and the screening committee. They facilitated those focus groups and put together the presidential position profile. They conducted the recruitment and conducted preliminary screenings, which included ensuring that the candidates met our minimums and salary requirements. And they served as a conduit between the college and the candidates. The search firm also facilitated screening committee interviews, sessions, and forums. Next slide, please. Oh, human resources also had a role. We were the point of contact for the search firm. We provided support and coordination, such as sending out invitations and coordinating and scheduling campus events. We also participated in the recruitment along with the search firm by working with marketing to develop the marketing materials. And we also advertised on different associations, job boards, and higher ed sources that we have memberships to. So, we participated that way as well. Human resources also trained the screening committees by providing legal guidelines and confidentiality training. And then, human resources made the official offer to the candidate when it was at that point. Next slide, please. The screening committee, their role was to review applications, narrow the pool to the semifinalists, do the- narrow the pool to the semifinalists, do the initial interview of the semifinalists, provide evaluation feedback, and then narrow that down to finalists. Next slide, please. The board, the board participated in the creation of the position profile, identified board members that participated in the screening committee, identif, inter, sorry, interviewed finalists, and made the final selection decision. So, next slide, please. This is an example or proposed timeline. It is a bit ambitious, but this is one of the things that you would have to make a decision on as the board. So, the, that includes the process step, the timeframes, and the number of weeks anticipated. So, the RFP process and firm selection, that would take place between August 23rd, when the RFP went out, through September 13th, that's three weeks. The position profile, for sake of time, we would recommend doing a survey, would be from September 9th through the 13th, so one week to create that position profile and solicit feedback via a survey. Recruitment would then take place from the 16th of September through October 4th, a three-week period, which is pretty standard, and for how long we post our positions. The screening committee would look at the semifinalists from October 7th through November 1st, that's four weeks. On-site finalist visits would take place November 4th through November 8th, one week. And then, a decision by the board, an offer, and the negotiations for the contract would take place between November 11th through the 15th, with a potential start date for the new president of December 1st, 2024. We would, once a timeline is decided upon, we would make sure that the search firm would adhere to our timelines. So, that's essentially it. We have to, we ask you to decide who selects the search consultant or firm. Again, is that gonna be the Board of Trustees, or will it be Human Resources? And then, if the proposed timeline should be adopted.
Trustees, do you have any questions for Rebecca?
I'm actually Kristi.
Would you please?
I know it said on the agenda that Rebecca was going to do this, so I should've started that. I'm Kristi Dolly, Assistant Vice President of Human Resources, sorry.
I thought that was, I apologize.
No, don't worry about it.
Okay, Mr. Daley.
Just two, one comment and one suggestion in this, and I'm glad to see that this is out. When you're looking at the RFP's request for proposal on the first slide, you talk about the firm must have conducted three successful executive level searches for community colleges or universities. I would hope the emphasis would be on public, as opposed to private or for profit, that there's, those are different entities. And then, the other thing is, I'd like to have a legal counsel, board legal counsel review this proposal, this process, to ensure conformity with the Michigan Community College Act.
I have reviewed the timeframe and the like. I will indicate that under the Michigan Community College Act, the decision with respect, so, what the Michigan Community College Act says with respect to your selection of a chief executive officer or president is, is very little. It says, one, the person has to be selected by the board. So, if you have a committee, a subcommittee of sorts, or a committee which involves people that are not on the board, while they could make recommendations, they could not have any final say with respect to who your president will be. So, you have to make sure that you have a process that, make sure that any decisions with respect to the persons to be considered and/or to be chosen is solely by the Board of Trustees. Secondarily, the Michigan Community College Act does not set forth any process under which you could, would have to follow. It is, I think, tradition in most higher educations that they would have committees involving various aspects of the constituencies involved to participate in some way or another. And, under your present guidelines, you could create an ad hoc committee and task them with the responsibility of doing a lot of these things that are outlined, a lot of the initial work, even making recommendations, but they could not be binding on the board in any way whatsoever. If, remember, under ad hoc committees, the chairperson has the right to make the appointments, but in creating an ad hoc committee, you could put conditions on the appointment of various individuals, and what types of individuals should be made. And, so that's the, that the process that, under your present policies, you would most likely have to use if you wanted to do some sort of a quote-unquote "selection committee."
Any other questions, Mr. Freeman?
You made some comment about contractual requirements, about engagement of faculty, other people. Can you speak to that a little bit in the selection, and kind of just part of the decision-making process?
Sure, we would wanna review all of our union contracts to ensure that we are following any hiring processes that take place for administration, specifically within the faculty contract. They, it is detailed out that they have a role in that.
Yeah, I, I know that, I was involved in the initial process, and in no way did the screening committee make the recommendation of who was going to be chosen. They were, it was a, as you articulated, it was a cross-section of our community that kind of laid out what needs, expectations, you know, what kind of things that they would like to see. But ultimately, the board makes the decision, and made the decision, last time. It was 100% decision by the board that decided who the president was going to be. So, in no way was that diminished. So, it's a screening committee, it's not a selection committee, and there's a big difference.
Correct.
Any other comments? Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Moving along to approval of the minutes.
I move approval of the minutes that's submitted for July 15th.
We have a motion to approve the minutes from July 15th's meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any corrections or comments on them? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The opposed nays, the ayes have it. Minutes are approved. Informational report. Standing Board Committee reports. Finance audit, Mr. Swanson?
The Finance Committee held a meeting last Wednesday, I believe. The minutes to that meeting should be on a table outside of the auditorium here.
Thank you. Personnel had no meeting, Wendy, is that correct? Board policy, that was my po, committee. And you've had the first reading of Policy 5008 for Item 2.34. Also, also in that meeting, we had a couple of other things that we discussed to bring to the board to get the feeling. The bill's going to help us with the Open Meetings Act timeframe for meeting notices. And I believe it's 18 hours, we have a timeframe of 72. And, there's also an issue about committees as well as subcommittees, whether or not that number needs to be changed. So, it's, right now, it's more of, Bill, can you explain this? Because we're just looking for the feel of the board.
Sure, so there, under the Open Meetings Act, you schedule your regular meetings at the beginning of your year, which you do, and, so that's done. But there's, the, the Open Meetings Act is, let's just say, vague with respect to the issue of committees and subcommittees and the like with respect to the notice provided under those, under that law. It appears as if the Open Meetings Act would dictate at least 18 hours' notice of a meeting of a subcommittee. Since I've been part of your, providing help with your legal services, it appears as if the process has always been to provide at least 72 hours' notice of the subcommittee, of the committee meetings and any subcommittee meetings that take place. And, through the various postings and the notices that have been going out. Your bylaws do not provide, again, there's some lack of clarity with respect to what your policies indicate in that regard, but it appears to be that's what the process has been, give 72 hours' notice. And I believe the question you had asked me, Andy, was whether or not you, whether or not the, the board wants to formalize a, a policy in this regard or not, and that's up to you guys to do, whether or not you wish to do it or not, and refer it back to the committee.
Thank you. Each trustee, would you like the board to revise this downward on the number of hours that are required? Or are you happy in keeping it where it's at? Mr. Daley?
I haven't thought about it that far yet.
Okay.
Come back to me in a minute.
Okay. Mr. Freeman?
Standard now is what, 72?
Yes.
Minimum?
You're fine with that?
It should be at least.
Okay. Mr. Swanson?
Well, 72 is fine with me.
Okay. Mrs. Couch?
72 is fine with me.
Good. Wendy?
72 is fine with me.
And 72 is good with me, so I don't think we're going to go and do anything with that. Thank you very much, Bill, for having brought that to our attention to look at it. The other thing that the committee talked about was the Ballinger Intimate Person Lecture Series Selection Committee. And, there was a suggestion that the selection committee would consist of seven members, with the Ballinger family appointing three members, the Board of Trustees appointing two members, and the appointment, two members appointed by the college president. And, if we do anything with that, it would be, a board policy, would like to get the feel of the board, if you would like to move forward with setting a policy to do this. And, there is one other thing that we've not discussed at that meeting, and nor it was addressed by the letter from Mr. Ballinger in this regard. But I would like to also see two faculty members also to be a part of the selection committee. What is the feeling of the board? Mr. Daley?
I think that's a reasonable thing to do, especially the inclusion of the faculty.
Okay. Mr. Freeman?
I, I haven't really been consulted or thought about it, so I really don't.
I believe you received the documents, as all other trustees did?
I just, I wasn't, no, I just didn't, I wasn't asked about it, so.
You have received all the documents.
You seem to be very passionate about it, so.
Jordan did take care of you. So, we have no comment from you. Mr. Swanson?
I agree with Mr. Daley.
Okay. Mrs. Couch?
I agree.
Okay. And Wendy?
I'm reading this email that we got right here, saying that this is what Bill wants.
Yes.
And he had signed it, so we'll do what he wants.
Okay, and I believe, so what we'll do, the Policy Committee will go back this next month, and we will compose a, a draft for this. And at the September meeting, we will have the first reading regarding this. Thank you very much. The Goals and Objectives Committee.
Goals and Objectives Committee met last Wednesday, myself and John Daley were in attendance. The sole agenda item was about evaluation, where we talked about first and foremost, the, the national and state levels we've been hearing a lot about. It's important that board members go through an evaluation process. And that, you know, we, we basically look at, with the end goal of everybody collectively working better together. This isn't about individual evaluation, it's about group evaluation. And, which is an important aspect when you're looking at accreditation. They look at functions of the board, and so we have not gone through any substantive evaluation in a very long time. Trustee Daley brought up looking at kind of a little bit broader, not only about us evaluating ourself and the way that we work, but within the functions of the board, or with the college, within the president, you know, we, and so I think he can better articulate his ideas or his thoughts on kind of a broader aspect of evaluation, looking at part of that being the board evaluation, but going into other aspects as well.
As I recall, there were really three components that we discussed. And again, there were just the two of us that were there for that discussion. The first, the, and, and I look at it, the three in terms of priorities that we need to work on is, first of all, developing the framework for a, the contract of a new president coming in, that just developing the framework for that, so that when we've gone through the search process and a candidate's been identified, it's not a protracted process in going through the contractual negotiations portion of it. So, that was the first step. The second step, the second one, would be one that would occur probably in February or March of next year with regards to board evaluation. And that would be an evaluation not of the individual members of the board, but of the entire board functioning. And that would have to be done, the discussion that we had was, it probably would be best done by an external third party, with, with that, with that in mind. And then, the fourth one was hammering out the evaluation form for the, to be used in the, in the annual evaluation of the new president, so that it's not a last-minute scramble to try to put together an evaluation form. It's a cohesive, insightful, evaluation, who is, that is geared towards improving performance and, and moving my community college along. So, those were the three areas we talked about. That's all I can recall. I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I think we can go, I would recommend if we move forward with it and the further discussions, we prioritize along those three lines. And, it makes, it's something that makes sense to me.
Thank you very much. While the ad hoc committee did not meet, the ad hoc committee is the group of people that work to facilitate the process by which we recruited our interim president. Given the report that we received from Kristi this evening, I would entertain a motion that the ad hoc committee work with personnel and to make the recommendations of the firms for the search, make recommendations for the candidates, work on developing the contract with the new president, with our board attorney, create the interview process, and, well as facilitate the visit on campus, the background checks that need to be done. Is there a motion to do that?
Mr. Chair?
I, I believe that we're just in the early process here. I think that that can wait until after the, uh, search firm is selected.
Okay. As we move forward with this, because there's a tight, tight frame that's setting in front of us on this timeline, we may have special meetings to move things forward in a timely manner. Next item, administrative items, the president's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, Mr. Asman will provide us an update on celebrating employees and student success.
You might have. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam Minister and President, and Members of the So, thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam Interim President, and members of the board. I'm actually filling in for Jason Wilson tonight, who couldn't be here. And I'd like to turn the mic over to Al Perry, the Director of Athletics, to talk about some recent successes in that area.
Thank you, Dr. Asman, Madam President, Board of Trustees. I'm happy to tell you about our busy summer in athletics, give you some updates about the things that we had going on there. This summer, like all summers, oh, we do have slides, perfect. I was worried I didn't see the other ones. Fantastic. So we hosted several camps, as we normally do, men's and women's basketball. They went off exceedingly well. This year, we also had an opportunity to work with Monte Morris, he's a professional basketball player that came out of Beecher and currently plays for the Phoenix Suns, to host a free basketball camp for one hundred and twenty-five youth in Flint. It was an amazing, amazing experience, and it was great to be able to host that for the community. On the next slide, we'll tell you a little bit about what was probably the biggest time investment. For the first time in probably twenty years, we were searching for three new head coaches that, we pride ourselves in retaining our coaches long-term. This is one of those rare events where we had three head coaches to fill. Volleyball is the first gentleman there on the left, that's Eric Luskowski, sorry. Jordan Jennings, she's our women's, head women's cross-country coach now, and Nathan Elston is our head men's cross-country coach. I won't bore you on all the details, but I do think a fun fact about Jordan Jennings, she is a Davidson alum, broke all the records at Davidson for cross-country, and was a two-time NCAA All-American at Eastern, and holds all the records there for, for cross-country. So I'm not, I'm not going to go too, yeah, pretty, pretty exciting. I'm not going to go too deep into their profiles, because on the next slide, one of our big announcements is we have a new website, mottbears.com. I encourage everybody to check it out. And the full bios for all of our coaches are on there. In addition to that, we worked with the Design Center, with Jim Sherter and Candy Martin and Eva Burnett, which is one of our students in the Design Center, who helped us develop a forward-facing logo. So we're not changing our logo, we're just creating some more variation there, so get ready for some forward-facing logo merch coming your way here pretty soon. As always, we have a lot more things in the mix for this year, but I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you guys about that today. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hal.
So the slides in the packet were, I think, out of order from what they are on the screen, so we're going to have to step back. One of our big announcements is that Professor Sunny Samuels was appointed to the Board of Directors of the United Way of Genesee County. Sunny Samuels Larry is a full-time professor of mathematics, and has been for a long time serving as an advisor of the Sten Scholars and LSAM program. I actually had the honor of getting to ask her to take on the role of being the advisor for the honors program, and I was very gratified when she accepted that. She has a wonderful working relationship with the students. She's been working in higher education for twenty-four years, and has a master's degree in mathematics from the University of Maryland, and a bachelor of science in mathematics from South Carolina State University, and we are very proud of the way she is representing us in the community in this role. Next slide, please. Okay. We also want to say congratulations to the Early Childhood Education Team for having their NIAC accreditation of early childhood program re-up through, through July of twenty-twenty-three. Shout-out to all of them. This was a heavy lift. Any program accreditation that we do is a team effort, and it's actually a process that starts the minute the prior accreditation is granted. So they've been working on this for, for a decade, collecting their data, making sure that they have their notes. Rod Reyes, Professor Rod Reyes, is the coordinator of that program, and I had some firsthand observation, the amount of work that he put into that, and the hours that he put into that. But he also had the support of Mike Martin, the other full-time faculty, and Becky Garsky and Paula Spencer. They all deserve recognition for the hard work, and I would be remiss if I didn't add to this, the support that they got from the Health and Human Services Division, and the dean and the administrative staff there. It was a team effort, for sure. And NIAC actually gave them special shout-out for the work that they did in going through this process, and helping the leadership of NIAC understand better their own accreditation process, and helped them refine that, because they were working under some new parameters with that. So a heartfelt congratulation to them for representing Mauch Community College very well on a national stage. And that concludes the report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think I'm next, too. So I'm not going anywhere.
Adrian.
Well, the enrollment?
Yes.
Okay, the enrollment update. Okay. So the numbers that we have for summer are very encouraging, a head count of thirty-one-seventy, which is a ten-point-two percent increase from the comparison year, which is two years ago. And the contact hours are actually twenty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-five, which is a seven-point-nine percent increase from the comparison year, substantial increases. And we feel that that's headed very much in the right direction. As of yesterday for fall, we're looking at a head count of fifty-nine-seventy-two total, with, which is a two-point-three percent increase from the comparison year. And the contact hours of sixty-two thousand three hundred and nine point five, which is a four-point-six increase from the comparison year. Again, encouraging numbers, and I will add on those numbers that we're still enrolling students. We are a long way out from census day for the full semester, and even longer out from census day from our subterms. So we're making big pushes to increase those numbers. We meet daily to strategize about the things that we can do to increase our enrollment, especially when it comes to retaining students, making sure that they are working towards their goals, and we're supporting those endeavors. Additionally, this is.
Before you go further, those are like, that's how I like to see the information presented to us, where you're giving us not only a percent, but you're also giving us the hard numbers that really help, we've got the two aligned where we can see that comparison, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. I'll have to give credit to Jason Wilson for that.
Since we're asking questions now, when you did the first one, the final summer numbers?
Yeah.
Was that a year-to-year, because I think I misheard, because my earpiece squished, and I didn't hear quite right. Was that last year that we were comparing it to?
So I'm going to have to double-check my understanding on these numbers, though, because we do, we look at multiple enrollment reports. We do do a year-over-year comparison, but because of the volatility of enrollment, they set a comparison number, the executive cabinet did, of two years ago, to see where we were with this. And so that should be a comparison of twenty-two, is my understanding, but let me double-check that with Jason Wilson.
So it's a twenty-twenty-two year, not twenty-twenty-three?
But I brought, but we are also up over last year.
Okay, thank you.
And then additionally, this is Welcome Back Week, this is the week where full-time faculty return to their regular contract period. It's also a week where we have some really wonderful events. Trustee Scholars Dinner was on Monday. This year, we have thirty-two trustee scholars, representing thirty-two different school districts, who have accepted the offer and enrolled. And I believe some of the concern is, well, why are we doing the trustee scholars when the state is also giving, you know, money to just about everyone? Trustee scholars are immediately enrolled in our honors programs, they get advanced admission into that, which means they engage in a more rigorous curriculum, and they get additional support from our scholar program coordinator, who is Jessica Bixel. And we really try hard to build a sense of community with them, an identification with Mauch Community College, and we push them, because we don't want them just to be honors students at Mauch Community College, we want them to be honors students where they're transferring to. And that was a wonderful event, I loved that event. This is also, today actually, was the day that we had the faculty Welcome Back Meeting. A lot of that was informational, we covered some trends, developments, new regulatory concerns around TRIDAL IX with the Department of Education, but the highlight of that meeting today was that we had a student panel. We're focusing this year on the lived experience of our student, which was part of the research project that we were engaged in last year, and we brought in five students of different backgrounds to share what it means for them to be students at Mauch Community College. And I was deeply moved, and I'm incredibly grateful to the deans for suggesting that and pulling it together. It really, really went well. And tomorrow, of course, we have the All College Welcome Back, and we all look forward to that. And then the first day of regular classes for the fifteen-week term, and the first-half semester subterm starts next Tuesday, and then the first day of late-start classes is the end of September. The reason why that's important is, and this is something that I, we talk about in our academic affairs meetings all the time, we are not done scheduling until students are done enrolling. And so we are going to continue to push for enrollment, continue to push to keep students moving forward, adding extra classes if they have the capacity to do that, definitely up through that nine-thirty, thirty date. We just made an adjustment to our schedule, we're looking to add fifteen to eighteen late-start classes based on what we believe to be the legitimate demands of our students who want to get in, and students who are expressing a need to enroll. So just because nine-three comes around, doesn't mean we're done enrolling students, it doesn't mean that we're done scheduling classes. And that's why those numbers that we presented up above are going to be evolving numbers. So that is my report.
Are there any questions, trustees? Thank you very much.
And I think I'm still here for the next one. Okay. This is the overview of the Adrian College visit that happened on August eighth. MCC, Mauch Community College, took a chair, took a team there led by Chair Everman, Secretary Wolcott, and interim president Richardson Snell. The Adrian team was led by Jeffrey Docking, they toured the campus in several facilities, and encouragingly agreed to a follow-up meeting this fall. A little bit of background about Adrian College, which is a liberal arts college in Adrian, in southern part of the state, was chartered one hundred and sixty years ago. It currently has eighteen-hundred students, which in my experience makes it almost a mid-sized liberal arts college. I taught at a liberal arts college in Arkansas that only had eleven-hundred students, that's where, one of my first places, and we consider ourselves to be mid-sized, so they have a healthy enrollment. With a fifteen-to-one faculty ratio, they have seventy-eight facilities, thirty-nine housing units, they encompass more than one hundred and thirty-two acres of programs, of property. Their academic programs, they have undergraduate programs of one hundred and thirty-nine majors and minors, many of those are overlapping, of course. They have fourteen graduate programs, six pre-professional programs, and something that we're really intrigued by, they have ten innovation institutes. It's something that we have talked about here, creating centers of excellence that promote innovation, and so we're really looking forward to learning more about them. In terms of innovation, US News and World Report named them the most innovative college, and I want to amend the slide, because US News and World Report did say "in the Midwest", and best value college committed to building a college of the future and delivering a comprehensive liberal arts education to engaged graduates. So what are the next steps for this meeting? We're meeting with the Adrian Vice President and Leaders here at Mauch on the week of September sixteenth, to plan for program articulation agreements, that's where we try to make sure that our programs align with theirs, which is a really important thing that we do for our students when we have partnerships with a college, to make sure that they are progressing when they transfer to a four-year, and they don't have to step back and take additional classes, because they miss something that's a requirement there. Also institutional articulation agreements, to make sure that transfer happens smoothly across the board. And then shared co-curricular programming options. These would be, co-curricular, definition of that is a learning activity that has specific goals and outcomes that happens outside of the class. More than enrichment, more than just student activities, these are things where we expect shared learning to happen, and where we're going to measure that learning and assess it. And then the Ransom Scholars Initiative, which is something that Jason Wilson is particularly interested in looking at. And then identifying future opportunities. He looked at me and said, let's talk to them about Partner College elevating that status, so that it's more than just what we have with a lot of our institutions, which are articulation agreements. It's one where we're actually collaborating on innovations, type of relationship that we have, for instance, with Ferris, where we really do engage with them around shared programming. They are here in our university center, they recruit our students, we have articulation agreements with them, and early childhood education that we just talked about, and our HVAC program. So we're excited about the possibility of future opportunities with them, and that concludes it for.
Before you leave, go back to that last slide, please.
Yes. I think the one before that, yep.
The Ransom Scholarship Initiative, that is from Judge Robert Ransom.
Right.
Robert Ransom was a graduate of Flint Junior College, graduate of Adrian, and serves on their Board of Trustees, and we have been working on this program for a few years now. However, I must bring in Wendy now, as well as Jeff, for those of you in the audience that don't know what's been happening. Last October, we were at a conference in Las Vegas. One of the other colleges had talked about a health center, and Wendy and Jeff became excited about it, I was at it. If you're a student at the college, you basically have health insurance, and you'll be taken care of. Adrian does this, not all the community colleges in our state do it. So Wendy and Jeff were pretty excited about this, and Bob Ransom and I have been talking about this since, since twenty-seventeen. They built their building down there that accommodates, and they work with priority healthcare. The idea is, if students enroll, the parents come, they see that they're going to have healthcare when they're there, and parents want to be there, they want their students to be there. Jeff and Wendy's have gone to look, I went down and looked at it, gone with the judge and Dr. Docking, who wrote the book, The College of the Future, he's wrote a couple of books. Ideas that were brought back here a year ago, last August, that the community college system is trying to do, are laid out in his book. As those of you that were at the meeting at that time, you saw that we couldn't get it to move forward. There are many ideas like this, that we feel that we now have the opportunity to move forward. It would be nice to have Dr. Docking and our interim president, as well as the new chancellor from Yovan Flent, and Katerine's president, to discuss the future of higher education, and how it is going to evolve into the, to the future. So there's a lot of neat ideas. The dean is helping us with this, with the dental program and the nursing and PT program. There's some exciting things that we don't, have not talked about, because we haven't really been able to, and where many of you have been frustrated with us, I apologize for that, but there is a vision, there is ideas, we're trying to move the college forward in a positive light, so that when people bring their students here, they want to be here, because they know it's a very safe environment. Having said all that, I believe I've said way too much. Jeff and Wendy, do you have any comment at this time about this?
This is something that we've been working on for a while, and I'm really excited, and I think once they see all of our vision when it comes to this for our students, and how successful it is at Adrian, that everyone would be on board with this.
Thank you, Wendy. Jeff, do you have any comment? Okay. Thank you very much for letting me to blab on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Associate Vice President Robert Matthews to provide us with the medical legal death investigative training update. to provide us with the medical legal death investigative training update.
Good evening again, Mr. Chair, Madam Interim President and Trustees. I want to share a quick update with you on the medical legal death investigation program. VP Wilson and I had an opportunity to meet with Dr. Bush, who currently serves as the college's medical director. We had a really good conversation about some of the needs in the industry and specifically related to this program. As a follow-up, he was able to share with us a pretty extensive list of stakeholders from this particular community. And they represent a number of sectors. Higher education, the funeral services community, law enforcement, and a couple of others. Subsequent to that, we were able to send out an invite. We're going to be hosting this group actually on September the 18th to begin some further conversation with them to explore what their current needs are and ways that they might provide support and guidance to Mott Community College in our exploration of developing a program. So we look forward to being able to share more with you. But we believe it will be a really great conversation and a really solid group of individuals.
Thank you. Don't go away. Are there any comments, questions from the board members? Once again, from the people in the gallery, this is another project that we've been working on for quite some time. Dr. Bush, which most of us don't get to actually see. We actually made an appointment to stop by his office and meet him and talk with him. It was the first time he'd ever met trustees. And secondly, this is his idea, it's not ours. But it looks so good that we need to explore it and see where it works. So we're, once again, it's an idea that we're trying to feather out to make sure it's working for the best interest, not only for our community, but there currently is nobody else doing this in the state. So, and we have the Medical Examiner Autopsy Assistant Program, which many of those classes are going to cross-reference into this one. So it looks like a pretty positive thing for everybody. Thank you for indulging me again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Dr. Anar Guru, our Dean of Health Services, will provide an update on the dental program.
Thank you. Oh, good, it's live already. Perfect. I'm here to talk to you about the dental program. As you all know, we've been looking at it quite a lot recently with a variety of tours. Multiple people have attended those and meetings to discuss the feasibility of what to do next. And if you could advance the slide for me. Some of the considerations when looking at what to do next is the accreditors. Per last year's site visit, the space met all the requirements, but is seemingly not effective for the changing needs we're visibly seeing internally. We also look at academic needs. The supervision of a dentist is required. Is he able to supervise them well? The learning spaces need to be adapted to the subject matter. And the faculty, per faculty, there are space limitations that exist in some areas. Too much space in some, too little in others. That's because the existing spaces are not conducive to the use of the new technology that they have obtained. And the students, they need access to study in private seating spaces and room to move about their patients. And speaking of the patients, they want to have an organized environment for privacy and space for larger individuals, accommodated spaces and so forth. Ultimately, what we want is a welcoming, effective and efficient space. And those are the words of you interim president. And I agree. A two-pronged approach is the way to go. I think that's what we've discussed as a group, where we look at a phase one. What are the immediate low-cost modifications? What are some in-house resources that could be employed to make those modifications? And so we are going to be looking at that in upcoming meetings and using outside resources only as needed. As far as a phase two, that's long-term goal development, where consideration to renovation or relocation is looked at. And again, there's multiple considerations to be reviewed by key stakeholders in that arena. Both are going to be done at the same time. So it's concurrent phase one and phase two with a timeline of around the holiday break, possibly for some immediate fixes. And then the determination for the future and the timeline remains to be seen. Thank you. Are there any questions?
So to further augment this, this is another project that came forward because of Sue Couch and one of her friends that couldn't use the elevator. We then looked at the dental program and the space in it and it kind of ballooned into the board taking an interest in this as to what needs to happen in the future to make it move forward and improve it. So thank you very much. And before you leave, we have the next thing that we need to talk with you about. So, and for those of you that didn't understand why the meeting was moved from Monday till today, we had had a report at the last meeting as it related to our program for the bachelor's in the science of nursing that we partner with Eastern Michigan. And we had some further follow-up questions that we wanted to get taken care of. So what we did was the Finance Committee, which was Mr. Daly, Trustee Daly and Trustee Swanson, had suggested that we give a couple of extra days so she could prepare. So that is the reason why we are at Wednesday instead of Monday. So could you give us an update and we'll have questions?
Okay. Well, I apologize in that I, at the publish of the final agenda, I was not aware that this was going to be covered today. But I know a lot about the topic and I am happy to answer questions as I can. The ADN-to-BSN grant program is with EMU, as we talked about last month in the board meeting. And we're moving forward toward the grant-funded lounge space. And so we have a design for that. And we also obtained furniture for classrooms, updated furniture that is more accommodating to the adult learner. And that will be installed at the end of September. We do have a full program. There were 126 interested candidates with room to hold 80, and we are full. There is a huge interest in this. Some of the students have to complete some MTA requirements in order to begin their bachelor's level courses. But Eastern is amazing and is working with us to articulate seamlessly so that there is not a lot of extra for a student to do to go on and take their BSN. By the time these students are done, achieving a BSN might cost them about $2,000 as we go through the Eastern Michigan program. Thank you.
You did have, we did receive $2 million for this, correct, from the state?
The grant is $2 million, correct.
Okay. Okay. And were you going to add to that, Larry?
Of course. That would be great.
So at the Finance Committee meeting, it was brought up about the sustainability of the space, it was being remodeled. And Dr. Daly had brought up the concern of what was being done and whether or not it could be sustained. So we did have Colin Murphy, who was with IDS, an engineer, come out Wednesday afternoon after the committee meeting. And he and I and Rod sat down and talked to him and expressed concerns and went and walked the space. And he sent an email, and I'll just read parts of it, on Friday. So the Nursing Collaboration Lounge Renovation Project in the current Mott complex will be designed to meet all code requirements, including meeting or exceeding all the energy efficiency requirements of the current energy code. It is anticipated that this renovation work will result in energy savings compared to current energy utilization in this renovation area. And then he listed some items that would be done to help achieve this. So existing fluorescent lighting shall be replaced with new high-efficiency LED lighting. Lighting will be controlled by new space occupancy sensors to automatically deactivate lights when the space is unoccupied. Existing mechanical equipment is decades old and shall be replaced with new equipment with enhanced performance efficiency. Existing pneumatic temperature controls shall be replaced with new digital electronic temperature controls, including enhanced control performance and enhanced energy management features. And then new space ventilation controls shall be connected to space occupancy sensors to automatically reduce the mechanical system energy use when the space is unoccupied. So his overall assessment, there will be energy savings from this.
So could you give us an itemized list? As Trustee Daly had pointed out with the program that Dr. Asman had given, that shows how the funds are being allocated and how the expenditures contribute to student success so we can see that at our next meeting. And also, how are we going to retract, how are we going to track retention of the students in the program? What specific indicators for the data will we be tracking for those students? So that that can be shared with us at our next meeting?
I'm happy to address that question. Of course, as the students are just getting started, we don't have data on retention yet. We just have data on the students that are signing up. But we have used part of that grant to retain a retention specialist here at Mott, who is working directly with the students, meeting with them and acting as a liaison with the folks at EMU for any questions or difficulties or road bumps that they have. We also have a nurse navigator that is paid for through the grant that is helping the students to navigate through their next steps to becoming a BSN. So there are funds put toward that effort of retention because ultimately what we want is more nurses for our community. That's the reason we decided to apply for this grant in the first place.
Thank you. Any other questions from a board member? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madam President?
Next, we have AVP Matt, oh, sorry. Larry? No. AVP Matthews to provide an update on our apprenticeship luncheon today. Great program.
Thank you and good evening again. I'm bringing good news. So today, we hosted an apprenticeship luncheon. And you'll see the title was "Building Tomorrow's Workforce." And really the focus here was for us to meet with employers. But also, we hear lots of comments often from employers around skills gaps and their desire to really find talent and in many cases to groom talent. And so we know apprenticeship is one way they can do that. Hopefully, you all know, and it's not a surprise, that Mott Community College has been doing apprenticeships since 1959. And we, over the years, have, of course, worked with thousands of apprentices. In the early days, they were all with General Motors. So now apprenticeships have really changed in that there are opportunities in many industries. We had a dozen companies to meet with us today, about 30 representatives, and really, really positive feedback. So we look forward to being able to help a number of those companies to start new apprenticeships. And we got some really good feedback through emails and some inquiries for follow-up meetings even before the day ended. So very positive and fruitful event.
Thank you. Trustees, do you have any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Robert.
Yes, and I have one more and I will be departing. So one of the programs that we offer at the Wagner Building is our Adult Education Program. And I want you all to know that our team has done a phenomenal job with this program in terms of a couple of things. One, the program has been designed in a very flexible manner so that we offer three opportunities a day for students, morning, afternoon and evening. We took a leap of faith a few years ago and created the program so that it would be open entry, open exit and more like a competency-based model. So students are not restricted by seat time. As the students acquire knowledge and gain skills, they are able to test in the subject matter and move past that subject matter if they're successful. And so we are finding that for some really aggressive students, we've had a couple in recent, in recent weeks and the last couple of months, one who actually completed in three weeks. And so and so I want to share with you that we are, the good news is that, you know, through our efforts and through this work, we have been, our funding has been renewed for four years in this program. And you will note, it's a combination of federal and state funding. But the good thing is that our base level funding for the year is $731,471. And so, and we look forward to being able to, there are opportunities that we get to increase that based upon our enrollment and performance in the program. And so that's just one year's worth of funding. So we're really excited and ready to kick off the new year. Thank you.
Madam President?
Thank you, Robert. Next, CFO Larry Gothrop, providing the construction authorization from the State of Michigan for the Proll Center.
Thank you. So actually, what I want to do is go through the Proll, this would be for the Proll Building, and kind of go through the timeline. Part of it will be history and then we'll move forward. So understand that there are many, many steps that we have to go through for approvals. So you see the state approvals that we received back in 2023. The board approved the bond allocation. The state DTMB review, Phase 200, 300, which is schematic drawings, were submitted. And then the 200, 300 DTMB review and approval was, they did that in June. Then it has to go back to the JCOs and back to the full legislature again. Next slide, please. For the construction authorization. So we are not authorized to spend $1 on this project until we receive this. We didn't know whether we'd get it or not because they were going out of session. We did end up getting it in July. We thought it would be in October, but we did receive that. So the next steps that we have, and we just had a meeting with IDS, is onboarding, or excuse me, is a kickoff event for this project. And we talked through the next steps. So we'll have to get a construction manager. That, once we find that person or go through the RFP process, we'll bring that forward to you once we select that. And then we need to go through the next phases, which is Phase 400, which is the final design and development, September, October. Phase 400, the DTMB, again, they have to review this every single time. It goes back and forth. We're anticipating through November. And then the construction document, Phase 500, November, January. That's where IDS does the final bid specs to get it bid. Then we, then the DTMB again has to review that so they're okay with it. And then we can bid it out. And so we anticipate having this May of 2025 to you, starting construction in June of 2025 with a two-year lead time. But the whole purpose was this, to let you know that we got the state construction authorization.
Thank you.
It's a long way of saying all that, but that's what this is about.
Are there any questions from the trustees? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Larry.
You're welcome. I think I got one more. So Rod, I'll go ahead and do this. Yeah. So Ram G, we were asked to do an update on the Ram G deconstruction. We all know there's a chain link fence around it. It's been there for over a year. It's beyond its useful life. It's beyond repair. I should say, repair where we would get anything benefit back out of it. We could sink millions of dollars into it, but that would not be the best use of our resources. So we employ Walker consultants. They are parking consultants. And what they generally do is come out each year and look at the decks to make sure that there's nothing that needs to be done, which has not occurred for the past several years. There's always something that needs to be done on those decks. And so that's the services they provide us. And they're under a bid that we had with them. So since they're for engineering certification only, we asked them to give us a design proposal. So they sent us, they gave us a design proposal for $261,770. Rod and I talked about it and I said, "That seems really high." So I also got an education in this deck because I'm thinking, probably like you, it's a duck. You come out, tear it down, and then you take it away. Well, I was told and through this whole process that there are a lot of electrical systems in there. We're trying to also save things in there. And it's not, it goes beyond just tearing the ram down. So since they had only the bid for the engineering certification, we said we're going to bid this out. So we did post the RFP on BidNet. So we did post the RFP on bidnet.com on July 16th. We did originally say design and construction together, but we pulled out just for the design, and we reposted on August 7th. We received the RFPs on August 23rd, and we are reviewing those to award that at the next meeting.
Any questions, trustees? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Next, we have Associate Vice President Dale Wayhill to provide an update on the grant award summary. Trustee Daley, this is to address your request to see the grants awarded. So we're at the beginning of the new fiscal year, so we'll, our plan will be to provide this report on a monthly basis. And we will also include the sustainability plan, if applicable, for each grant award that we receive.
You've just given my report.
Oh, shoot. Sorry.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chair, trustees, and interim President Shonda. So this is the format that we've selected, and let me just say, there was discussion at the Finance Committee meeting, and I think there was consensus there that we would begin doing this. Trustee Daley was particularly interested in knowing when we received official word that we got a grant, not so much that we've applied, but that we've received it. And so, and these other things were reflected or come out of that conversation. So we only had one grant that we received official notification on and awarded in July of this year, and the grant name is the second column. It's the 60 by 30 Go Big Grant, and that is in partnership with an organization, a nonprofit called the Diploma Equity Project, gentleman named Doug Ross. They've been working very closely with Dr. Sonia Walker, who is Director of Strategic Projects in interim President Richardson Snell's office. So there's a lot of 60 by 30 grants. This one is called Go Big. The department that will be administering this, once we receive the dollars, is Academic Student Support Services, so that's the first column. Funding source is the State of Michigan. As I said, lots of 60 by 30 grants. In case you all don't know, or maybe the audience watching at home, 60 by 30 is an initiative of Governor Whitmer, State of Michigan Legislature, to try to ensure that 60% of our population by the year 2030 has some sort of college credential. Doesn't necessarily have to be an associate's degree, could be a certificate, so non-credit certificate, but at least there's some sort of credential, because we know that drives the economy and people's salaries and wages. This particular proposal submitted April 12th. Lots of, I should mention that Ann Rennie, I believe, I have eyes in the back of my head, the grants manager, is here somewhere, and Dr. Sonia Walker, who I mentioned earlier, they worked closely with Diploma Equity, submitted in April. I believe we got the word on July the 1st. The total requested for Mott was $385,000. I should also say Diploma Equity Project has an amount of $75,000. And then Oakland University is also part of this partnership. They received $482,000. So the total is actually a $942,000 grant, split three ways, but not evenly split. Let's see here. Notes, partnership with Diploma Equity. That should also say Oakland University. The grant dates is blank at the moment, because we don't actually have the award letter. We have notification in the form, I think, of an email from the state, but we're waiting to see what the parameters are for start and end dates on the grant. It's a three-year grant, I do know that, running through, I believe, 2026. Grant overview, this is all about adult students, so the non-traditional age students that we've been focusing on. You all know that we just opened the Adult Student Center. Lots of emphasis on that category, so this relates to them. And then sustainability plan is another topic, Shonda said, that came out of finance. This one is not a capital grant, so it's not about bricks and mortar or technology. It's about programming. And so with program grants, I've been doing these for a long, long time on the nonprofit sector and here at the college, as you get closer to the end of it, you're looking at the grant, you're evaluating what went wrong, what went right, and then you look for either funding from the same funder, so in this case, the State of Michigan, or you look for funders who might have an interest in this type of work. So for example, we could say, you know, the CS Mott Foundation has definite interest in adult students, and they've funded some other things. You know, in two years, as we get close to the end of this, we might approach our program officer there to say, "These are our results. We don't have as much money from the state as we thought we would. This grant's ending. Would you entertain a conversation?" And we could do that with any number of funders. So that is my report. Happy to take questions. We'll be back next month with the August awards. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions, trustees? Would you turn your microphone on, Mr. Daley?
That's just one award. Is there a, when you look at this on an annual basis, is there a timeframe in which you get a lump of awards coming in, or?
I would say it's really varied, John, or Dr. Daley. I think that the renewals that we get, and we get a fair number of grant renewals, mostly related to AVP Matthews area workforce and economic development, is funded, I think, almost entirely with grant dollars, federal or state, and through the CS Mott Foundation quite a bit there. Lots of grants get renewed, and I think those, the months vary, but I think that the grant always gets renewed, you know, in the same month. Some are three years, some are one year. Is that fair to say, Robert? The other grants are kind of all over the map.
Any other question? John, did you, so we can hear you better.
I just said, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
You're welcome. Kudos to Ann Rennie and others for putting this together.
Great work.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dale. The final report, I will give an oral update from the conversations that I've had with both the Higher Learning Commission, as well as Standard Impores in regards to our rating, our credit rating. There has been a lot of comment related to the potential loss of the accreditation that Mott Community College holds so dearly, and that is so incredibly important to not only the employees, the staff, the faculty, but most certainly to our students. And believe me when I tell you, very important to me as well. I had no higher priority upon coming into this college than to ensure that the accreditation would be confirmed and would remain intact. And indeed, that is what I had discovered. I held a conference call with our liaison, Anthea Sweeney, at the Higher Learning Commission on August 13th. During that call, we reviewed the process that began in 2018, the 2018, 2019 academic year, when the accreditation was awarded. Our next reaffirmation visit will occur in 2028. During that reaffirmation evaluation, the Higher Learning Commission will examine whether the institution meets both the criteria for accreditation and also the federal compliance requirements. During the call with Anthea, I was able to confirm that Mott's Year Four Review, which began in October of 2022, resulted in no monitoring being assigned by the Higher Learning Commission. In Anthea's own words, she said, "From where Mott sits, the sky is blue." So we are under no monitoring, and there are no current concerns by the Higher Learning Commission of any of the recent activities that have taken place at Mott. The exact words that she spoke, and I will quote her, "I am happy to confirm the institution is not under any current monitoring, sanction, or other inquiry of the Higher Learning Commission."
Was a point of clarification. That was because of your hiring?
In part, or any other actions taken by the board.
Thank you.
On August 21st, we had, we connected with Standard Impores and the lead analyst that covers Mott Community College. We made, we notified us, Standard Impores, of the change in leadership, which is standard protocol and a requirement under the rating that has been issued. She informed us that the event of a leadership change is not a material event that would cause them to change their rating. And their latest rating, which is an evergreen rating of A+, was reaffirmed during that call. Our rating will not be changed until, or reassessed until the next time that we issue bonds, or if a material event were to occur. Our A-plus rating stands, and it has been reconfirmed by Standard Impores. And that concludes my report.
I have a question about that. We were told, because of the policies that have changed, that our credit rating was going to be adjusted downward. So that is not something that they've even mentioned?
No.
Oh, so people really didn't know what they were talking about. Does that conclude the president's report?
Point of clarification, I think what was said was, it could be, when you do massive policy changes, you do things that could set up red flags, it can be. So let's just be clear about what was actually said, because it's true.
Pigs can also fly, once you put enough behind them.
Yeah, and also accreditation can be questioned.
Quit trying to fear mongering is not good for our college.
Andy, you know what?
I didn't call on you to speak.
Yeah, well, you know what?
Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous business with board-generated ideas. We had a motion made at one of our previous meetings about the mega site. We have several options that we could use on this. One, we could have a town hall forum, or we could have both sides come in to explain their sides of the issues. The other, we could send a letter that we supply education to anyone that requests it. And those are, unless the rest of you have some other idea, those are basically the two options that we have at this point. And there seems to be suggestions out in the community for one or the other, but it's the board's decision, and I would be glad to take a motion so that we can move this forward, one way or the other, with what the board's decision is. Trustee Daley, you had individually called me and had a suggestion for some wordings for this, and we would be glad to take that at this point.
The wording, I've thought about this, and certainly I understand the impact, but our job and our mission at Mott Community is really focused on education and training, and that there are other units of government that are very close to that situation. You have a township form of government that's there in Monday Township. You have a board of county commissioners, sorry, Dale, who are more closely involved in making those decisions. More importantly, they have access to the staffs that can determine whether or not there could be potential problems. They have liaisons that are already established with Eagle, the Michigan Environmental Agency. So my recommendation was that we look at, saying we continue to support economic development in Genesee County, but that the actual site approval really belongs in the hands of local units of government, and that we will stand ready to provide training and education to support any effort that's going to come to Genesee County.
So we have a motion, and it's long, so let's make sure that we have it down. And let's see, do we have a second for it?
My motion is that we, that a letter be sent to the, to Tim Harmon's crew, the Chamber of Commerce, the team that's leading this, and say that our position on this is that we support economic development as being a generally advantageous thing for the county, and that our job as a community college is to work with anyone who's coming into this county to develop, to educate people and develop a base of talent in the county that can be drawn on to further support the needs of the county.
Okay. Before we go further, as we have that, want to make sure that the recorders get it all down. Madam Interim President, do you have any comment on this or suggestions on this?
My position on this has been the same as yours, Dr. Daley. Mott's role here is to provide training, education, and staffing to any company without discrimination within our geographic area that we service. It's not our role, I don't believe, to take any position whatsoever with respect to whether or not the project in question moves forward, but without a doubt, we do intend and we want to be the premier provider of all education, training, and staffing in the event that it does move forward. And so I do believe that a letter of intent to provide services is appropriate without taking a position, one way or the other, with respect to the project itself, because that's what we're here for, and not to discriminate one way or the other. It is up to the local governing bodies, the residents, and the Flint Genesee Group to make the determination as to whether or not the project moves forward. I would propose a letter of intent to provide services.
John, do you want? Yes. Use your microphone, so it can be.
I'm going to second John's motion. I didn't hear the support on the motion.
John, the letter of intent, do you want, you want it to be a letter of intent, that part of your motion?
Yes.
Okay. And Recording Secretary?
Is there a support on the motion that's before the board?
Do we have a support? Okay. Yes. Okay. As challenging as that was, do you have that written out so that you could read it back for everybody before we vote on it? I'm sure that was a friendly smile.
I have most of that, but I'm probably going to be paraphrasing, but in a way that will be consistent with what he said.
Okay, please.
So the motion before the floors, before the board, is for the board to send a letter of intent to provide services of education and training to promote economic development in Genesee County in general, but not as to any specifically, specific project that is in the hands of local authorities.
That's fine with me.
Good. Okay. Any comments? Seeing none. Roll call vote. Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Couch?
Yes.
Mrs. Walcott?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Pass is unanimous. We will have that letter put together. Board-generated ideas. Does anybody else have any suggestions at this time for anything? I do. So the other day, I attended the event with the scholars, the trustee scholars, and as I sat there and watched it, I went, "We're the vocational education scholars." So therefore, I would like us to put together a high school graduates vocational educational scholarship program with tools and other items as needed for their program of study. Question can be answered. Question can be asked, as it was earlier in the evening, that all education right now as you graduate from high school is free. By doing this, we're setting an example of something that we think is important for our college's future and for, not only for our state and for our nation, that we need to encourage students to go into vocational education. So as Chair, I can't make the motion. But I would ask one of you to make the motion that I've just made.
Mr. Chair, I would make that motion for the vocational scholarship.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I would second it.
Thank you. Madam Recording Secretary, do you need help with that?
The motion made by trustee Swanson and seconded by trustee Daley is to develop a vocational educational scholars program directed at high school students throughout Mott Community College's jurisdiction.
With supplying tools and other items as needed for the program.
Add tools and other items?
As needed for the program.
Does that sound correct to you, Mr., trustee Swanson?
That works.
Any discussion? Seeing none. A roll call vote. Mr. Dale, Dr. Daley?
Yes.
Dr. Freeman, or Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Walcott?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for that. I think that's one of the nicest things we've done this evening. Does anybody else have an idea for board-generated ideas that you would like to share this evening? Seeing none. We have no closed session scheduled for this evening. Comments from the board members. Mr. Freeman?
No comment.
Mrs. Couch?
No comment.
Mr. Swanson?
No.
Trustee Daley?
No comment.
Trustee Wendy?
I just want to say, despite everything with our new interim president, with everything that's thrown at her, I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you. And my comment is, I thank all of you that have stayed for the meeting this evening. And hopefully, we continue to move forward. And you get to hear and see the ideas that we've had for over a year and a half that we've not been able to bring forward. And we're trying to get them accomplished now. Thank you very much, and have a safe journey home. Meeting's adjourned.